Any additions or corrections to the minutes for the March 19th meeting?
My question is, the resolution for the burn ban, did we not rescind it with a special meeting over the phone?
No, we rescinded the contact. We put it back in for the special.
On Monday you lifted the burn ban and then on Thursday you reinstated it.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. So every time we... Every time we issue a burn ban, we approve a resolution and then we rescind it when we lift the burn. Okay.
A different resolution.
Okay, I was misreading that. When we list tax abatements, is there anything that we have to do legally to list them by name or amount or anything like that? It's just one total amount, whatever we do in that particular week?
It's just how it's always been in the past? It doesn't mean it has to be that way?
I just wondered for research purposes if you wanted to know, I mean, how would you request abatements from the year 2017? I mean, do you go by, how are they filed?
You're talking about an individual abatement or the total?
Any or, either or, any of them?
I don't initiate very many tax abatements, but the ones that I initiate are on special assessments. And normally it's the people that come in and say, "I don't have a renter here and so then we abate this all the ways. Everything else is done in the affairs office and that would have to be asked of them how they're initiated." I know one is Pima under protest. The other, I think, is when they send out valuation notices, they can ask for a hearing and then add that hearing. But other than that, I'm not 100% sure. And then I think the treasurer's office does some on those heavy trucks that are taxed, they're the tax roll. And then the affairs office does some personal property, you know, if they mark that they sold something on the detention.
Okay.
And then I have a book and we keep them in a numeric order and we keep them on file.
Oh, by the number, okay, the abatement identification number for your office?
So I don't know if I answered your question.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense. So they'd already be in, basically, they'd be in chronological order? I move to approve the commission minutes from March 19th, 2018?
Have a motion to approve the minutes from March 19th. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all of us, the fair is the aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a special meeting. Put burn ban on on March 21st. Telephone meeting.
I move to approve.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all of us, the fair is the aye.
Aye.
If you guys could sign the resolution.
Uh, it's right here.
So I don't forget. That's just what, faxed a book to the sheriff's office.
We have a travel agreement here with Tim at 11:01 to determine date, March 21st, 2018, as we discussed in a meeting a couple of weeks ago.
I move to approve.
Have a motion to approve the travel agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all of us, the fair is the aye.
Aye.
We have a notice here from the hospital effective April 1st, 2018, that they're going to increase the meal costs to $6.50 for prisoner meals that they provide. It's been $6 and that has been?
It's been $4.
$4?
Yeah, I wrote it down there.
Okay.
Mike thought that was.
Well, we probably haven't had an increase for several years.
I ever remember that.
I don't imagine we've ever had one.
We're just doing two meals a day, right?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't think you're gonna get better deal anyplace else. There's some statistics Al Joe brought back from his juvenile detention.
Is this just for our district, well?
Well, no, it's for North Central Kansas, juvenile detention center.
The counties are listed here, I see.
Includes more than 12,000. Do they still have the one in Walkeenie, the western part of state?
I'm not sure they're operating. I don't know. I don't think there is. I think there's one in Dodge City and somewhere down there. And there's one in Paterson. There's one in, uh, Sejuh County has their own. There's one in southeast Kansas somewhere, but I can't tell you where it's at. Maybe in Crawford County. Johnson County has their own. I will say that the month of February, the numbers were high down there after the shooting in Florida at the school. We were inundated with several kids that had been making threats on Facebook. They're taking those very seriously now. So I think we were up to 20. We had been running around 12 to 15, but spiked up to 20. And I forgot what he said the other day, whether it was 18 or something in there then, I think.
It says we had one for the entire year in Lincoln County.
That's maybe true, yes.
21 days, I think it said.
Guess the other thing that's not on those statistics is that in the last 18 months, we have started, I would say, an extensive education program with the computer, where are the only site, juvenile detention site, that will give a GED or can give a GED. And we have had four pass. We had another that probably would have passed, but his mother refused to sign the papers to let him take it because it could cost her some financial support some way. I'm not sure how the law reads. I think he was a 16-year-old, I believe. A lot of those kids, of course, are under IEPs, Individual Educational Plans. And so those are coordinated with the school districts that they come from. It's a pretty intense program. We've been very, seem to be very successful in getting the kids to do it. I think we've had a couple that have just goofed off, but most of them are more than willing to try to better themselves. I think that's positive influence. We've also been talking about those that pass the GEDs of things that we can provide for them while they're still incarcerated there, such as employment skills, how to get a job. We're pretty limited on teaching skills because we can't have welders and things like that in there. But trying to get them to, about their parents and how they go about getting an interview. And so we're trying to, I think the emphasis has gotten a lot better on trying to rehabilitate these kids. But I think the average stay is only 15 days, so you can't do much in 15 days. But some of those have a tendency to revisit us frequently.
Mary?
Oh, no, are we, go ahead.
Mary, you want to come up and visit with us?
I'm here. I want to, hopefully, if it still exists, the Lincoln County Preservation Board. I've heard that it has been, having, holding meetings for several years. I could be wrong.
It's been pretty active, yes.
So, anyway, I'm on the Demarc Preservation Board. Been on the Lincoln, and I still am on the Lincoln, Art Center Board. So, anyway.
Long lifetime resident?
You know, born here, live here, I'm sure I'm gonna die.
Life to county.
Family that is very interested in history, especially in Lincoln County.
Both sides, both sides.
So you're just here to express your personal interest?
Yes. And, you know, I don't know who's on the board. I don't know who.
We, yeah, Donna can provide you with this. You know, I tell you, I tell you, one of the reasons that it's not very active is money, you know?
True.
We don't have, lack of money.
And that's, to me, that's where your grant writers are in.
Yeah, that's, and that's the only way it can survive.
I truly understand that.
And some of them have been very successful in other areas, raising money for barns and preserving those kinds of things, which have some historical significance in this county. There's a couple, there's a couple barns in this area probably could.
Just my personal, I've had two of our personal barns restored and that are limestone, so.
Do you know how many people are on that board? Because I don't.
I don't. Is there nine? I don't have a full one, but.
The good thing is, we've had a lot of interest this time around because we advertised the positions. And it, we have three openings.
Well, the, you know, the more people that are interested and willing to try to help out in whatever area, the better off we are.
Is that a three-year term?
I believe it is, yeah. We can get you a complete list of the ones that are on there.
And are they still interested in being on the board?
There's three of them that are up for reappointment. I think they were.
Two had expressed feedback that they would like to maintain their position on the board.
And Penny, he's, his wife called him. He said that if there's others that are interested, he would be happy to relinquish his spot.
Which one?
Penny.
Oh, okay. Do you have any ideas? I mean, I really am not familiar with the preservation board.
You know, encompassing Lincoln County, you can have all kinds of things that need taken care of. You know, where the, you know, the Sylvan Grove area had the double arch bridge taken care of. I know there's a lot of work that goes into something like that, a lot of time, a lot of paperwork. I just, I, I'm, you know, I'm flying by the seat of my pants because, you know, what do these people know that I don't know? What do they see that I may not see?
That you have some time that you could contribute.
Yeah.
Do we have the authority to change the number of seats on the board?
Do we what?
Do we have the authority to change the number of seats on the board, out of curiosity? I don't, was that done by a resolution?
You mean by the number, number seats?
From nine to 12 or nine to?
I would say, we probably, I don't know how that was formed. I guess we would have to investigate how it's formed.
Bylaws, I think they have.
Yeah, they would have bylaws. I would, they might have to change your own bylaws.
I'm only bringing it up because with so much interest, it'd be nice to have more people involved. And then when you do have a meeting, if certain ones can't attend, you're still active and you're not calling it off because.
Like, like the art center, you know, you have your main board, but then you have either two or three others that can sit on the board. And then you have members that can still show up. And it's not quite the members.
I fire every board.
I fire every board. And there's, you know, there's a lot of those. And they still get to vote if something comes up to vote. And that has made a big difference in how the art center's still going today.
You know, there is a good variety of people that are interested, even some young ones, which is surprising.
We had 10 on this list.
We had several young, young people.
How often are there meetings? Do we know? How often are there meetings?
Well, she says they have meetings.
I don't think they have for several years.
Okay. Should it be something that's quarterly or how has it been run in the past?
Well, you know, I think it was just up to them, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, you know.
Probably depending on if they have an active project.
If they had something going, it would be more often than that, possibly.
I do want to put a word in for Deborah Farmeter. She is extremely, extremely good benefactor to restoration. Although she doesn't have a residence here all the time, she's here anywhere from, as far as I know, you know, six months out of the year or whatever. When last time I talked to her, it's just a matter of time before she moves here.
And she's the one that's restoring the building up there now?
Yes. She is very passionate about restoring things.
Maybe we should take a look at the board and see what the makeup is and if, you know, how it could be changed or whatever. Maybe to accommodate more voices.
Yes, the more voices you have, it's like your own menu, I mean.
I appreciate you coming in person. That doesn't mean that.
Yep. And I want to thank you guys for.
We'll do a little bit of research here and see where we're at.
Okay. And thank you for being county commissioners.
Oh, thank you.
Did you send a check?
Every year, right?
That's right. There you go.
Did you say twice? If you're lucky enough, you can send it once.
All right, a few months ahead. I guess we'll go ahead and bring Eric in. I'm sure we'll get behind in here somewhere. Eric, you want to come on in? Very seldom I would say I had a little, some conversations. Uh-oh. Have a skiing accident?
Yeah, bitch. Ongoing surgery from, uh, 12, 2012. Had to put more pins in. Uh-oh. So the reason why I'm here this morning is the ceramic tile in the kitchen area, we added in the dishwashing, food prep area and in the laundry area, but there was three rooms that, it was our understanding, they wanted to go with the vinyl tile. Well, apparently that was wrong. That is the dry storage, which is the, basically, the pantry area. The hallway that connects that to the kitchen and the bathroom that's on the opposite side of that hallway is required by code to have. So I got a price for the ceramic tile. The first time I got it, I sent it back and told them to redo it. It was $8,200.
I'm sorry, did you just say it was required by code to have the pantry in the hallway ceramic tiled?
No, no, no. The, I'm sorry. I meant the bathroom is required by code for the kitchen people.
To have a, their private bathroom.
Yeah, they've got to have a private bathroom, so the hallway connects everything to that.
So you're saying because the bathroom has to be a private bathroom, that they, it doesn't have to be a private bathroom?
No, the bathroom, I shouldn't even brought it up. The bathroom is there now and they want, because the hallway in front of it's going to be ceramic tile, the kitchen on the other side of the wall from it is going to be ceramic tile. They thought that little space of the five by five ought to go ahead and have ceramic tile in that. That's the only reason why I brought the bathroom.
So we're talking about changing a five by five foot section, 25 square feet of, of what, to ceramic tile?
From vinyl tile to ceramic tile, because the surrounding area around it is ceramic tile. It would be the only area in that section of the building that doesn't have ceramic tile. So.
I was just confused when you said required by code and all those little things you were adding in.
Sorry, I didn't mean to make it confusing. So it's kitchen dry storage, the hallway and the restroom area, approximately 420 square feet.
Wait a minute, you just said 25 square feet. So are we talking?
The bathroom is 25 square feet. The storage room and the hallway added to that pulls up to four.
So you're coming with the request that 420 square feet go from vinyl tile to ceramic tile?
Yes.
But you just told me that it was 25 square feet and it would be the only section in that whole area that hadn't already been approved for ceramic tile? I'm a little confused.
Let me start all over again. He said three spaces and then the bathroom issue came up.
Yeah, the bathroom. I said it's just a small space, so we threw it in there because it was such a small space and probably not in 25 square feet, it's probably smaller than that, to just finish off that area with all ceramic tile. Instead of having an island in that area that was vinyl tile and everything else was ceramic tile, we decided to go ahead and put it in there in this change order. And the original change order, when I got it, was 8,200. I sent it back to them, told them that was too high. The final figure I got from them is right in line with the cost per square foot of the ceramic tile we're putting in now. And that's 6,500 square feet, or $6,505.40. And they are wanting it pretty bad. In fact, we shut down work.
Who are they?
The staff. We shut down work.
The administration or? Yes.
We shut down work to wait, find out the results of this today. They can go ahead and put the vinyl tile in, but it would probably be better if it was ceramic tile. It just.
So you shut down work today? That means they have the vinyl tile on site, ready and prepared?
Vinyl tile is ready. The ceramic tile is readily available, so we should be able to get back up and running if we go ceramic tile.
But to be clear, this 420 square feet that you're coming to us for change to go from vinyl tile to ceramic tile, none of it is in an area where the residents live or at any activities?
It's all in the.
And none of it is required by code?
Kitchen preparation. The flooring they've gotten out meets code. It's worn out, so it has to be replaced. We were going to go with the vinyl tile.
So this is pretty much just a plea for an upgrade, is what you're saying?
Yes.
I don't, I guess I don't see a need.
I would concur.
You know, if it was a higher, a lot higher maintenance area, I could see going to ceramic.
Well, originally, we had it with that vinyl tile that we got running throughout the building. And to us, it didn't look like it was a need, you know? When we got the directive to cut back on things, we didn't make that ceramic tile. However, administration had thought that it was going to go in there. And so when they saw them laying down vinyl tile, they stopped them.
I don't think it's a necessary change. I think, you know, necessary change is some, you know, things that have to be changed is one thing. I guess I'm not, we're running a little ahead right now financially.
Yeah, we're doing, yeah.
I hate to, that could change yet. And I hate to change it on a, I'd rather change it on a need than a won't.
Something on desperation, frankly.
I understand.
The vinyl will hold up for what purposes of?
It's a heavy duty vinyl, so, you know, it'll give them as many years as what they've got down there now, so. It's just that there's going to be a bump up to the ceramic tile, bump down when they run their parts. She didn't like that. I did get worried while I was laid up from the surgery that the power wires coming into the building are old and crap, oh, well, are cracked. The insulation has started to crack and break loose. That is a code issue, so we're probably going to have to do that. So I'm gonna, I've got the engineer doing some checking on that. So I'm gonna, I've got the engineer doing some checking on that. And I've got the, uh, electrical contractor putting together, contractor putting together some prices. So I'll come back to you later date on that, figure that out.
That, that's more the need.
Yeah, it is. I mean, you, you're gonna have to have it replaced sooner or later, and now's the good time. You probably get your best price now in the future, but...
There already never was.
Yeah, you got four wires that are that big around solid copper. So it's not, I mean, we're looking ten, fifteen thousand dollars, so...
They're all cracked?
Yeah. I, he sent me photographs, I, we're going to go up there and check it when we're done here. But, um, uh, there just looks like a bad asphalt road. That's what it looks like. Truly cracked, like...
So the actual copper or just the co... the coating?
The insulation.
So they can be re-insulated?
No.
You have to just replace the whole thing?
Yeah, replace the whole thing.
And where does that scrap material go?
I don't know. You probably, if you want it...
You think copper that size would be some sort of...
Well, I'll tell you what, I'll find out a price of what they'll, uh, charge, put in a new line and leave the old for you for salvage. Or a new line, they take the salvage and give you a break on prices.
Yeah, it would be good to see that, that would be... It should have a value of some sort.
Yeah, well, yeah, you will. As we all know, there's people running around out there stealing copper out of old abandoned farms and stuff. And the other, uh, thing that's come up, the, um, there's, um... Well, they're called expansion joint covers. They go over the joint between the additions. And, uh, what we put in meets the, uh, letter of the law, but it is causing people with, um, walkers to catch walkers on them. It's about an eighth of an inch tall, and that's still too much. So we're in the process of looking for, um, expansion joint covers. Just the cover. If we can get a cover and not have to cut the expansion joint out, put in a new expansion joint. That's the way we're going to go, but we're starting on that, I wanted you to know about that.
And will you be covering the cost of that out of the payments that have been made to you?
No.
Why is that?
Because we put in what was, uh, what met code.
I was under the impression that we hired you because of your expertise in this field and that you knew going into it what would be required in a nursing home as far as, you know, how to bring everything up to code and what would be ideal for the situation. And with a half a million dollar project, I would expect that those things would be taken care of.
It wasn't under code.
We, yeah, we, we put in what was required by regulation, that met regulation.
But in your expertise in the field, would you not have realized that maybe something like that would have been an issue with a wheelchair walker or something?
It's never been an issue before.
So is it just one particular person's walker? Is that what we're talking about?
I don't know.
But you've, but you've installed these expansion joints in the past and they've never been an issue?
Right. So, I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to, to bail out of any responsibility, just that this has never been issued to us before.
So it may just be one particular hang-up?
I think what it is, is one particular state inspector for the Department of Aging, to be honest. So, um...
So that was written up in the latest CMS report?
It was written up, I don't know if the latest one was written up in one, yeah.
Then they have come to do the inspections since the new expansion joints have been put in?
I don't know. I was just contacted and told that they were having trouble with it and that it wasn't going to work.
You were contacted by the state inspector?
By the administration.
And the administration said that the state inspector told them that it wouldn't... So why did you say you believe that it's one particular state inspector?
Because I don't know where in any of the regulations it says that what we put in is not right. So it's either preference or an inspector.
But as far as we know, there has not been an inspection yet because we still have ongoing construction.
Far as I know.
But you haven't been told that an inspector was dissatisfied?
No.
Then why did you just bring that to the table about a minute ago?
Because I didn't want to surprise you about it if it does turn out that we have to replace. Trying to be open.
Sounds like you're trying to be misleading, but I would understand more...
I beg your pardon.
You told me that you think it sounds like one particular state inspector, I wrote it down right here.
I know, but the problem is you just write down what you want to hear.
No, you said it, you think that it was one particular state inspector.
After I had said other things. But I'm not trying to, to hide anything here. I'm definitely not trying to, and I don't know why you think I am. But I'm, I'm being as honest and upfront with you as I can be, so no surprises happen down the road. I'm truly working for you guys. If that, I, I, that's just a suspicion that's an inspector, but... I was contacted by, uh, Greg that it was not working and they were, were not going to be able to, uh, go that route.
Greg Batcock?
Yes. And so I don't know what predicate that, if it was one person or if it's multiple people or if it was an inspector or whatever. I was just contacted about it and I started looking into other solutions. The problem is, they don't get much there in that.
Okay. And I think maybe we would need to know what the real cause of the problem is. Is this one particular resident who is having trouble getting in and out of their room with their particular walker? Or are we having a, a problem across the board? Have we installed all of the expansion joints into every room?
Three of them, not in every room, they're in the hallways.
Just the hallway ones?
Yeah, if you notice at the double doors, there's a metal strip on the floor.
The threshold, the threshold?
That's an expansion joint. And we, and what we did was, we took the cover off and we put this new cover on to, because we added heights to the floor with the tile. So, but there is enough of a, uh, change in elevation there that apparently the walkers catch on.
So is there some sort of way to produce some sort of, uh, what do I want to call it? Like a, could you not use some caulking or something to, to ease that transition between the two?
Well, we're going to look at it today to see if... The other thing I thought was take the covers off and bevel the edge and then put them back down. And see if they'll sit, but if there's, um...
My only concern with this is when you get these particular complaints like this, and we've already invested the money and the work's already been done for that portion of it, we're being asked to go back and increase the cost to redo work that has been done. And there could be multiple complaints about any of this if things aren't just particularly right. And if it is from an inspector, then we need to have a meeting with that inspector ourselves.
I'm just responding to what was brought to me, and I just, um, wanted to make sure that you folks were aware. I, I'm not... I, I thought they were fine, but...
And you're saying you've used them before and it's never been a problem?
Yeah.
There might be a way to remedy this without spending an exorbitant amount of money to redo what's already been done, which would be preferable in my eyes.
I would agree.
Last fall, inspectors noticed that there weren't tags on fire doors up there.
Yeah.
And that wasn't part of the remodel or whatever, but, uh, previously they got a bid, they got trouble getting bids from anyone to replace the fire doors, but they did get one. In January, some overhead door company, I think it was twenty...
And one from Topeka Foundry, I think.
Yeah, that's pretty scary, that's why I was looking at it. Twenty-six thousand or something like that. But the ones they brought in, the second one was forty-seven thousand. Topeka Foundry, they brought that in a couple of weeks ago, I think it was.
I don't know, sure, I'm sorry.
Is there anything in this that, uh, we could not proceed on because of what you guys are doing up there now? Is there any part of this that would affect that?
No, because...
Twenty-two thou... or twenty-six thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Is this just for the doors or is that the installation?
Yeah, that's everything.
Hardware and installation, I think. I, I didn't get the, uh, figures for, for them, but I believe it's nine doors?
Kitchen main door, kitchen secondary door, west hall by the east nurses station, west hall, center corridor.
Assisted living main entry, assisted living hallway, double doors by bulletin board, milo court doors, back kitchen door, back ambulance entrance, ten.
Ten?
I'm getting ten.
Okay.
So, if you're looking at it from this standpoint at ten, the price is probably...
I was going to say, that's twenty-six hundred dollars a door. With, the fire doors are your expensive doors, no question about it. And the hardware that goes on them has to be fire-rated with the door and all that stuff, so...
They're all metal, correct?
Yes.
And so the existing ones are metal?
They can be metal or they can be wood, either one, believe it or not.
I think they're all metal because they're kind of brick or block, they were put in original.
I believe the ones that I'm, I've seen, I don't know about the ones going from the kitchen to the dining room, but, um, the rest of them are metal.
I remember that.
Yeah, if they're, if you're looking at ten doors, twenty-six hundred dollars usually, usually like fifteen hundred dollars we figured for a door installed. Well, then you throw in the, uh, fire rating and the fire-rated hardware, it's probably a double up.
I just, we need to do something on this, and I just want to make sure whether something...
The forty thousand dollars, I don't know what they're bidding on.
Yeah, I don't either. I would say they don't want the job very bad, and they're taking a chance, maybe somebody's going to go for it. That's just my guess, but...
Topeka Foundry's who I, well, who I used to get the, uh, expansion joint covers and all that, had them, uh, um, provide me with, uh, the current specs on those. So, um, usually they're pretty good, but that, you know, that's way out, way, way out.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't something that interfered with what you guys were...
No, um, we're, you know, there's a certain gap that you're supposed to have underneath the door or allowed to have underneath the door. And we're going to be in that gap area with the, with the expansion joint, so we should be fine. Once the door operates properly. And what they'll do, um, and what they can do is, a lot of those, um, metal doors, the bottom edge of it is U-shaped. So if they need to shave a little bit off, they can shave it off, so, um...
Will that goes to be custom built to the opening house then?
Well, I don't know if they're going to be custom built, but they'll be probably off the shelf doors, yeah. They'll take a measurement and see if they need to adjust the door frame and things like that.
I was wondering if they would need to wait until the floor, if they're...
Well, the floor's down and where those are, most of those are, yeah. So they, uh, they shouldn't have any problem with that. Overhead door is, is reputable, um, door company, supplier, I should say, so, um...
They were, they were interested early, they had to have to try and get a bid out of anybody else. We finally got one of those, Topeka Foundry.
Where is the, the less expensive company? Are they in Salina?
Overhead door, yeah. Well, they have a place in Salina.
Yeah, they, they have a shop in Salina, probably there. The shop it's coming from is Wichita, I would imagine.
They have, they're all over the place. They have one in Salina.
Yeah, they're Topeka, Anan...
Actually, I went to the lake, so that's why I had to rest on the bid, so...
That's probably Kansas, um, headquarters, Mr. Joe Rando. There's Curry's is another one that's out of Wichita. CEO, CE, something, out of Wichita that does, could do that. But if you got a price, then that sounds in the ballpark, so... All right, I'll tell them that we're going to continue with the overhead, or with, uh, LBT vinyl tile in the kitchen storage and hallway and restroom. And, um, which they've got it already prepared to do that, so... And then I'll come back to you about the wiring and all that stuff. And I'll find out about who, um, didn't like the... All right, anything else?
I don't think so right now.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. This is Greg Alexander. Somebody out there?
Morning.
Morning. Jack?
Morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. I have some maps here to hang out, have you up to you that kind of shows where we're at here in your county, predominantly over here in the southeast corner, for the most part. But, uh, my name's Greg Alexander, and I just wanted to take a few minutes of your time to talk to you about the pipeline that we have for Northern Natural here in your county. As I say, you can kind of see by these maps, got a couple of different views here, but highlighted up here, you know, predominantly in the, uh, southeast corner of your county. But, uh, of course, Northern Natural, our office is in Omaha. And, uh, in Lincoln County, we have approximately six, sixty-five miles of pipeline. And, uh, where you see the group of them here running together, that's actually six large diameter lines. They're twenty-four inch up to thirty inches in diameter. And then, uh, we have a takeoff there that comes off one of those main lines and heads up to supply the town of Beverly with gas, at which point the custody goes over to Kansas Gas Service. And, uh, with those essentially seven lines in your county, you count that two, that's a two-inch going to Beverly, the, uh, the maximum operating pressure on these lines can get up to nine hundred and ninety-one pounds, so they're definitely high-pressure transportation lines for the most part. We try to maintain pipeline signs at every crossing, you know, just to identify it, that, you know, people know where our pipes at, but, you know, that, that doesn't always work out so good. Sometimes, uh, you know, construction or large farm machine or something, you know, sometimes there's, uh, no good place really to put a sign. But, you know, we at least have one at a, at a crossing, sometimes maybe not on both sides. But of course, our pipeline signs, and typically any pipeline sign, it'll give the name of the operator, uh, the product carried in the line, and the emergency contact numbers. And, uh, for Northern, we have a, what we call the OCC, Operations Communication Center. Of course, it's located in Omaha. It's manned, of course, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. But, uh, the numbers, the contact number for that is, uh, the one-eight-eight-eight-three-six-seven-six-six-seven-one. Of course, uh, if anybody assumes, you know, of, uh, any gas leak or something around Northern, you know, we, we encourage them to call that OCC number and of course, nine-one-one. We, uh, just something, tell you that we, uh, we fly our pipelines... We, just something, tell you that we, we fly our pipelines twice a year, just, you know, with small aircraft looking for signs of construction, or even possibly, you know, anything that could be impinging on our right-of-way. Of course, as time and erosion and everything occurs, you know, sometimes we'll end up with shallow pipe. And, you know, we're looking for that, making sure we don't have any exposed pipes that are having completely exposed even, but always on the lookout for that. Something else, of course, we try to promote the Kansas eight one one, the use of the Kansas One Call Service, you know, that's a free service, and, you know, we can't stress that enough, that, you know, there's no charge for that, and the importance of using that. Something else, we have been doing here in, actually in Lincoln County, they're east to westfall on, I believe that's Elk Drive. I don't know if you folks got by there, but you know, we have that road pretty much, we had construction pretty much on either side of it. What we're doing is, we're upgrading our pipeline facilities, kind of, you know, different lines, you know, through different projects, of course. But the one we did there with last year, two years ago, it was the six forty C line. We come into the valve settings, predominantly, a lot of these older valve settings have plug valves, which won't allow, you know, full passage of a, of an inline inspection tool or, you know, otherwise a pig. So we're going back into these valve settings and putting full open ball valves, so we can pick these lines with what they call just smart tools, the inline inspection tools. And this summer, we're looking at doing our six forty D, east to westfall again on that road, tearing out a valve setting and upgrading it. So, but yeah, we're, we're working towards doing that. That's so far what we've been involved in, that's turned out to be a real good process for us. I mean, as far as safety, we can run these smart pigs through these lines, and it'll start showing us, you know, anywhere we have problems, and we can go back in and categorize them and follow up them, make repairs or inspections. And I handed you some pamphlets here. Of course, you know, they talk about, you know, the signs of a natural gas leak, you know, of course, like when we're flying the pipeline, we're looking for dead vegetation, you know, and/or water bubbling, you know, in any pond or river, wet area, of course, dirt being blown, thrown into the air. Hopefully not fire explosion, but, and of course, talk mentioned a little bit about exposed pipelines, but sometimes some of our own work could be the worst thing, you know, we can have, do some rehab on some pipeline and think we have it backfilled good, and then, you know, depending on the conditions and weather, essentially can, erode things back out and have to come back in and try to stabilize the situation. And, you know, one thing about pipes ours, you know, the size that we're having, you know, you're also looking or listening for hissing, whistling, or roaring sounds. And the smell of gas, not so much with ours, all of our lines, it's pretty, they're pretty much non-odorized. Like, for instance, you know, I've mentioned to you about the town of Beverly, that gas line runs up to Beverly and Kansas Gas Service takes it from there. Well, at that point, they have an odorant pot where they odorize the gas once the pressure's been reduced and everything. But, but for the, for us, it's just high pressure, I mean, natural gas, I mean, you know, they claim that you can't smell natur- natural gas, I mean, sometimes there can be a faint odor, but... You know, I'm kinda running over that pretty quick, but I'm not trying to take a lot of your time. One thing, I probably should've brought a sign, but inside that pamphlet, you know, it kinda has a picture there of our typical pipelines, and it'll have, you know, what, what line number it is, and possibly even what milepost, you know, if somebody was to have a problem, if they could get that, you know, maybe not where, make, you know, we don't want anybody to run back and get anything like that. You know, if you think there's problems, please get out of the area, and, you know, call the OCC and/or nine one one, and they can sure help, dispatcher, whoever could sure get ahold of Northern, and get somebody responding, you know, if we have a gas leak. Most of our, anything we have for a gas leak would be locked in probably either at Bushden or Tescot, so, you know, we're talking about some miles and probably a little bit of time, but... Any questions, or, I said, I'm running through all that pretty quick.
There's smaller feeder lines that you have running the Beverly-Lankum Sylvan Road.
Right.
Do you have some kind of easements with those landowners to where they know that line's there? I mean, have you got contact with them, where that line changes hands?
Well, you're bringing that up, just exactly that, the changing hands, that could be a, I really don't know. You know, a lot of those were done...
If there's a legal...
Years ago.
If there's a legal easement, it probably should show up on the abstract somewhere, I would think, but...
I can check into that.
They're a hundred years old, probably, or pretty close to that.
Yeah, some of them will be quite old. And that's something, you know, even that line, of course, we're trying to keep signs and everything on it, but, you know, depending on where, where a landowner is on that line, there may not be any signs, you know, to indicate even that a pipe's on their property. I'll do some checking with our right-of-way department, find out if there's anything.
I know the larger lines, they have easement or whatever on them, and I just wonder about those old feeder lines.
That I will have to check into.
I know the one there, Beverly, across the whole closing bridge of ours.
Exactly.
Steel, closing bridge.
Yeah, we're, there's talk of a project put into that to actually drill, you know, underneath that. Hopefully that's what we're looking at. I think it's a few years out yet, though, but...
We were out there several years ago, there was some target practicing going on in the area of that line.
Well, a couple of years ago, I know, you know, also we had, it's pretty good rains up here in west, we were...
Yeah.
Also concerned about, you know, just the structural integrity of it at that point. But yeah, I, I should've looked to see, see when that project was scheduled, but they're looking at wanting to bore that underneath that, and, you know, at that point, probably be best if that bridge disappeared then, but...
It's normally better if they disappear by plan rather than not by plan.
Exactly. That's true. Well, I will check into this legal easements on these branch lines, and I'll get back to your county clerk then when I find out that that's suitable with you.
I'll just, you know, if they're, you know, is there, isn't, or something that's really visible.
Right.
You know, might not hurt to make contact with the landowners and make sure they know it's there. Not as much telling as there used to be, but they're still telling, so...
Right. Well, if you all have any more questions, I could try to answer them, but, as I say, that's, that easement, that's something I'll sure need to check into. Then I have a bag of some goodies here, we have a lot of these, I mean, just knickknacks up for drawer openers and mouse pads and pens and shutter openers in here. And I'll leave these pamphlets here with y'all. I don't know if you need any more maps, I don't know if you expert yet anymore, somebody else you wanna get into?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming in and touching base on this.
I appreciate your time.
And I think our county crews is pretty consistent about calling dead things.
Yes.
Touching around without calling, so.
No, no, I can't say we've had any trouble with them, we appreciate that. They're pretty good by giving us a call, so. Keeps, try to keep everybody safe that way.
Yeah.
All righty, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Leave this right here, if that's okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, thank you.
Jessica Clay.
I have a couple of things for you this morning, I'd make it as quick as possible. The first one is, we've been working with the city regarding the direction of the rec and our charter ordinance and my position in trying to continue growing the rec. I think it's kind of outgrown what anybody expected it to be when it was inception nine years ago. And so, City Council has decided they want to create a committee to try and discuss some of those growing things that we're facing, and they asked that I would come and talk to you about that, since you do contribute to a portion of our budget for the year. And they asked, they're gonna do two city council members, two rec board members, myself, and they would like two appointments from the county, preferably one commissioner and then whomever else you see fit, so that we can start trying to, I don't wanna say reorganize, but refocus our goals for the rec commission as a whole.
And they wanted to relook at the charter ordinance and whether or not there were any things that needed to be updated or changed, things like that, the viability...
There is a board, right? And it's how many?
Seven.
And so they just want like a bigger discussion group?
They wanted to include City Council, partially because of the way our charter ordinance is written and we're chartered underneath the city. They wanted to include you guys because, again, you contribute to our budget for every year. And then my board members. The way the charter is written, they, my board can make hiring decisions. We make financial decisions as far as spending of our budget goes, but any other employment decisions are really made by the City Council.
You're just, you're not changing the format of the board?
No.
You're just increasing, you're just having a, putting together a committee to have a conversation about the...
The charter ordinance, the, the fact that, the potential to, potentially make it more full than part-time, some things like that, kinda focus more on now that it's been there, where do we all see that it should be going, where we want it to go, how much we want it to grow, things like that. And because you guys have a financial investment in that, they felt like...
Yeah, there's no doubt it's changed since it was originally started.
Is our portion a separate mill, or is it just out of the...
It's only five thousand.
Out of the general fund?
Yeah.
There's no levy attached with the rec at all. And one of the things that we're looking at is, like Deb said, my position. The charter ordinance states that it's a part-time position, and we've grown a lot since then. It's definitely not, or I think it's half-time is the way it's stated, but it's...
It's not in the charter ordinance, but, but yeah, they've always stated as a half-time position, but they just, because you have a financial interest, they think it's time to kind of reassess and reevaluate how it's functioning, how it should be functioning, what kind of goals we all see together for it down the road.
How is the rec board, is it elected, is it...
That's not elected, it's appointed.
By the City Council?
This...
City Council.
USD two ninety-nine and two ninety-eight each recommend a board member. This county recommends a board member. And then the city has the other four members that they have.
We didn't have rec board on here.
It's not on the board, it's the city.
You, you make a recommendation every two years?
It was the county's position. And you guys reappointed her, or re-recommended her in January?
Well, I think in October or November, I think she gave us a decision by November, and then you guys moved and approved her so that we could recommend it before the January.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so USD two ninety-eight, two ninety-nine, the county, the city.
Gets the other four.
Two from each school district, one, one from each school district, one from the county, and four from the city?
Yes.
So what is the difference between, just, and this is just a county question, what's the difference between electing our LCEDF board? Where we, is it because it has its own mill for that?
It has its own set of bylaws, it's a not-for-profit foundation that has its own bylaws, so I'm assuming within their bylaws says that they have an election. And again, that's my assumption.
I'm, yeah, I'm just asking.
You know what that stands for. And hopefully it won't create enough me, hopefully I was right.
How soon are you on here to get this?
I think by the next city council meeting, they are gonna have their two.
They're gonna have their two, we're supposed to pick our two at our meeting.
Which is the what, second Monday?
Yeah, ours is the first Wednesday, theirs is the second Monday.
So, so yes, we'll pick, we'll pick ours, they'll pick theirs. What time is your meeting?
Six p.m. And so ideally, if you...
Is this going to be, this committee going to be an ongoing thing?
I don't think so, I think it's going to...
Brainstorming?
Yeah.
I'd be glad to volunteer, unless either one of you wants to do it instead.
I...
And the council's thought was that if two of you had made a quorum, so then another person of your choosing...
Well, I think we can find somebody. Be able to, over time, then.
Absolutely.
Well, we can have it on Monday, the same Monday as the city council meeting, we'll have it in the morning.
Yeah. And then just let me know, and I'll...
I'd be glad to do it, if you have it in the meeting in the evening.
Yeah, and I'm not sure when it's gonna be, I don't know what city council members we're gonna have, I don't know yet what board members we're gonna have.
Well, I think that they, the one will be, they have like a Parks and Rec committee, and I think that Lisa is on that committee, and I think they alluded that she would be one, and I think she'd want it to be in the evening probably as well, so we can make something work that works for everyone.
Are you the, the board member from two ninety...
Well, I was, now I'm the city's.
City's three, I think, or two?
Yes. Gina Eckhart represents two ninety-eight. Stacy Meiler represents two ninety-nine. And then your guys is Elizabeth, and then myself, Laura Keever, Lori Spear, and Dale, thank you very much, I was struggling, Dale Ronsberg represents the city.
You're not on the board anymore?
She is.
She's as a city, as a city school...
So there are seven, I guess?
There's seven, yes. The city staggers their appointments so that they all come and go at the same time.
And is it three years?
Two or three, depending on...
Can probably get you a copy of the charter ordinance if you would like and all that stuff.
I would.
You could have that to...
I would.
I'd gladly print that off for you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the second...
We'll find someone at vested interest.
That would be wonderful, that would be great, I know there's quite a few people who, definitely.
A lot of children are involved in this, and they're surely...
Well, she's getting more adult activities too, I'll get into that.
Yeah, we're doing adult activities, we've added some younger kids that are outside of school age, trying to help us everybody as much as we possibly can. But then again, we encounter growing pains when that happens, but it's good for the program. And the other thing that I wanted to talk with you about is our Lincoln County Active Living, which is a product of Strategic Doing. There is a group of ten of us who have been actively going to the Strategic Doing meetings. We started as a Trails and Connectivity Group, which was a really big group when we started, and it's kind of dwindled down a little bit. And over the last few months, we've kind of changed focus, we're still Trails and Connectivity, we still wanna find a way to connect the entire county from Wilson Lake to Sylvan to Vespur, to Lincoln, to Tescot, and Barnard, and Denmark, and all of those things. But what we found, as we tried to incorporate everything that we wanted to do, was that there was all of these little projects within our one big vision. And so we tried to find a way that we could make that work still without having this big gigantic unfundable project. And we met with Jesse from Schwab Eaton, he's an engineer of Mbloue, and he created a master plan for Mbloue that focuses on their bike paths and trails mostly. And what he said to us was, the best thing for you to do at this point is to come up with a master plan. And so you pay an engineer to go through all of your projects... And so, you pay an engineer to go through all of your projects and they do the basic engineering on it. It gives you an estimated cost, a timeline, labor, materials, all of that. It also indexes everything based off of impact and how it's going to affect community members.
Do we have those preliminary plans from when we had the interns for LCEDF?
Well, their, yeah, their projects are part of what we wanna do. And so, Jesse said this is the best way to do it. But we want it to be countywide and not just, you know, we don't want Sylvan to do their own master plan and Lincoln to do their own, and then, you know, Barnard has a little bit here, and so, we decided we want to apply for a grant to get the funding to do a Lincoln County Active Living Master Plan. Currently, we have thirteen projects in it. But we wanted to ask your, well, make you aware of what we're doing and ask your approval and see if you would be willing to give us a letter of support for our grants.
I think so.
Okay.
And just as a, in addition to that, the group that I was working with, and I haven't been active recently, but in the beginning, we were formulating a plan, and it's kind of changed as far as what they're focusing on, but have you met with them as far as the historical society and what they were working on, because they were talking about doing programming so that you could have sites listed across the county and have pretty much an interactive map to use when you're looking for those things?
Where they're gonna use QR codes. Yeah, we all kind of went over all of our different groups at the last big meeting. And we made everybody aware that this is where we were going, and any of those projects that felt like they might fit within it, gave them the opportunity to tell us where they wanted to fit. And what we kind of came away from that with is, that portion of their project doesn't really fit within our master plan, but once we get some of these improvements done and some of these areas added, then we can go back in with them and say, okay. Like, the first thing on here is development of McReynolds Mill Park. So, it's over here on the other side of the highway, and if we can get that redeveloped, you know, then the historical society, we can meet up with them again and say, okay, let's get this mapped out and get a QR code for it and get it out.
Is that site registered?
I don't-
Is that a registered site?
Hmm, I don't think so. I don't think it is.
So, is that something you're considering?
Yes.
Just from what we've been discussing about being within the parameters of the restoration process, just to make sure that it fits all of their guidelines?
Right, and Jesse will, from Schwab Eaton, he will address all of that when he does his planning portion of it. But almost everything that's in our project list has had some pieces done, which helps greatly with the cost. You know, all of the plans that the interns did last summer, Jesse said that's amazing and it totally makes his job easier and will reduce the cost that we have to pay for the engineering portion of the project.
So, are you applying for the funding, the grant funding, to pay the engineer?
Mm-hmm. Yep, and with thirteen, it's, it's an estimate, but with thirteen projects, we're probably looking at about twelve to fifteen thousand dollars total for the master plan. But the great thing about that is it can be used by anybody. Once we have the plan done and the book is done, anybody who wants to start working on a project can go through it and say, oh, this grant is available and it fits into this project perfectly, and I can go forward with that.
And do you have other sources of funding that you're seeking, or is this all gonna be through that Dane Hansen?
It's, we're gonna apply for the Postrec Community Foundation Grant, which is due May first.
This new one, not the one that-
This cycle is due, it opened March first and closes May first. Correct?
Sure.
And then we will go from there to Dane Hansen directly. For the projects themselves, we've done a lot of research and there's a lot of funding available for a lot of these different projects that are within our master plan, but when you're trying to get that planning done initially, there's not so much money. I guess if you would be willing to write a letter of support, that would be super. It would help us out greatly, show that we have the county on board.
Can we get a list of the projects so that we know what we're writing about?
There you go.
If you're knowledgeable in what they're trying to do there, can you come up with something for us, letters of support?
I can help you with that.
I was gonna say, I think we can work something so that the dog doesn't have to recreate-
If someone is familiar with the project, if it's involved in helping-
Have some samples or something.
Grab them up.
That would be helpful.
No problem. Okay.
No more of the specifics and stuff.
Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you. That's all I have. Hope you're back in a couple of weeks.
Is that for them to keep?
Yes.
Thank you.
Be back in a couple of weeks with our financial report.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Put on, you're next.
I'm next. Just kind of decided to do the last Monday of the month as my update to you guys, if it works. So, basically, the first thing I have is with our fourteen twenty-two grant, we did encourage all the county employees to make Walk Kansas teams and submit them to me. We've got three teams. In it to thin it, move it and lose it, and happy feet. And I would like the commissioners to pick the winner of the best name. There's a prize. Want me to repeat them?
Yes.
In it to thin it, move it and lose it, and happy feet.
Oh, it's gotta be move it, lose it. Anyone else have a suggestion?
I have kids, I'm gonna go with happy feet.
You like happy feet? You like the other one, I suppose, huh?
It doesn't matter to me.
It doesn't matter to me here. I just want to want to-
I just wanted to make a, a non, non-interested party make the decision of the best name.
I could go with happy feet.
Okay, happy feet it is. I'll let them know.
I'm not sure how happy they'll be, I'll have them.
Well, the prize is not huge, so I think it'll be okay. The chronic disease self-management class, we have seven people registered, six were at the first class, and we're doing that at the seniors center. It's for six weeks, so we go through the whole month of April. And Ashley Sfadi, and from Extension, and I am the co-leader, 'cause we have to be certified to teach the class from Stanford University, so it's not just a class anybody can teach. Emergency preparedness, we're just updating our POD sites and our mass dispensing. POD is a point of dispensing site, which if there was a mass, something where people had to be given vaccines or medications, we've exercised it in the past, you guys have both went through it, I think, but it doesn't count as an exercise or a drill to the state anymore, so we haven't exercised it in a long time.
Wow.
'Cause we should know how to do it.
Wouldn't that be one of the only things, though, that you would need to physically practice?
Yeah. It's government, don't ask.
Good point.
But anyway, we haven't worked on those memorandums of understanding with the schools and hospitals, and haven't looked at that plan for a while, so that's one of our things we're working on in April. As far as facilities are, we did get a hardwired internet jack into the meeting room where the, it wasn't too hard. That's the side with the concrete walls, but they were able to follow the electrical line down and make it work, so. And then today, they're working on getting us some boosters for our wireless, because when we have more than one wireless piece of equipment, it slows down the system because our, our wireless booster thing is not very strong, so we're getting a stronger one of those. And hopefully, our Vax Care system, some of our WIC stuff, there's lots of things that we have that are wireless, so we have more stuff running at the same time, especially right now, it's located in the hallway, back in the storage hallway, and the meeting room can't pick up very good, steady. I mean, we'll watch a webinar for a couple minutes and then it'll go out because it's wireless. Having the jack will help us too, but then if we have another piece of wireless equipment, it won't, it won't stay steady. The Vax Care system, when we do inventory, that's when we check out all of our immunizations, and some days it'll check out all day long, the next day it won't check anything out just 'cause we have inconsistent, so it's just the boosters in the building. Since it's all metal, that again, has an issue with it too. Hopefully, they'll get that done today, and that's all through Next Tech. It's outside the contract, but they do all of our contract work, and we want someone who knows our system messing with our system because of how it goes through the firewalls and everything. Then, the water softener, it belongs to Jordan Bryan, and it, he's repaired it three or four times, and he said, we're just gonna have to get a new one, so it hits his purchase, but it will increase the rental a little bit, and he didn't know by how much, so I think we pay twelve dollars a month now, so I don't think it'll be significant. Upcoming things that we're working on is we're working with the hospital on an opioid crisis awareness presentation. It would include a movie presentation and a roundtable for any, it would be a public meeting about opioid crisis. Steve is working on some things with the hospital and he's got some grant money for medications and things like that in emergency, if someone is ODing on opioids, but just some awareness to the general public and some of our emergency responders and stuff is, I think, needed. That's kind of, the health department's role in that is educating the public. Probably in June is when we'll try to get that.
Is there, are you seeing a problem with that? Are we having some-
The hospital is, oh yes, definitely.
They're, they're gonna see some EMS.
Yeah, an EMS, yeah, yeah. No, the health department doesn't really, isn't too involved except for, you know, that educating the community and the responders about what we're seeing.
But we are, we are seeing problems.
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah.
Huge drain on resources.
Yeah, it is.
Because, quick story, the hospital is on ambulance.
Yeah. But there is some grant funding on the hospital side, so, but it's mostly for medications and things like that, not for community education, so we're gonna work together on that. We are in June having a trauma-informed systems of care ACEs training, and without going into huge detail, research is finding that the, the trauma that you experienced as a child, say if you were a parent of divorce, or if you're some kind of physical abuse in your family, if you didn't have enough food, that that affects you later in life, not only your health, but your mental health and how you might respond to things. And the trend is to, instead of treating people like they have a problem, what was their, what was their history, it should be assessed, and they should be treated according to that. And it involves schools and law enforcement, emergency management, EMS, hospital, anybody that would like to come. It was part of our MCH grant, so there'll be a team from Wichita State University come out and do a presentation. It's just an hour and a half of introduction. Along with that, it is gonna be on June sixth, I believe, which is a Wednesday in the morning. And part of that is an ACEs screening that we are encouraging the medical system to use and maybe the schools as we go on in this process, but it does ask those questions of adults, you know, did you have enough food in your house? Did you ever go hungry? Did your, did your parents divorce or live separately? There's ten questions, I believe, that have been, they've been studied for numerous years, since two thousand and eight, I think, is when all these studies came out, but if you, depending on how many points you get, might depend on how you, how you parent and how your medical diseases that you might have as an adult, so it's interesting stuff, it's just, we're in the beginning stages of that. We're also working on Stop the Bleed. There's a training for trainers on May twenty-third in Mbloue. Three of us, the health department, are gonna be trained. Krista's already trained at the hospital, and I think Katie will be trained. Basically, it's to teach laypeople how to stop the bleed, and it started with gunshot wounds from all these shootings everywhere, like in Las Vegas. If people knew how to just stop the bleeding, lots of people might have been saved versus they blood to death, and it's teaching them how to pack the wound and use a tourniquet and those kind of things, so. We're gonna do that, we're gonna start trying to do some of the schools. And then also, I thought on our training, Columbus Day for training, it would be good for our county employees, 'cause it could be any kind, I mean, they could be out cutting trees and have a, a wound that needs packed before EMS can get there or something, so. And we're gonna try to get some grant money to pay for the kits that will have a tourniquet and some supplies in it. They're relatively inexpensive, but if you don't have the proper tools, in schools, you could put them with the AED, so they'd be right there if something happened, so it's just kind of a public awareness. And then maybe as we get along into it, maybe next year, go to some of the bigger employers and see if they would like that training, so.
You know, that's interesting you brought that up. Fifty years ago, maybe about sixty, there was a bad accident in Barnard. It just so happened that the postmaster had been a medic in the army, and they said the only reason the guy lived is because the guy packed, did such a good job. In fact, they wanted to know who did it. And the guy's now ninety-three years old and still living, so, but I mean, but it, it did save his life.
That's what this is best based on, is medic training.
It is.
Wendy Bronell O'Hare is coming to do the training from the trauma council, so. And, let's see, okay. And we just have a lot of things going on on the calendar outside of our regular things. We have the Eat Right for Life Conference in Salina, the Health Equity Conference in Rolling Hills, and lab draws, those are all going on next week. We have a suicide prevention presentation on April second at six thirty at the Lincoln High School Commons. Kansas Mental Health is coming to do that. Sharon Carlin's nephew from Kansas City is going to the schools to do some suicide awareness training also. He had a son who committed suicide and he has a foundation, so this is kind of an injunction to that. We've been trying to work on that with the schools for about a year now, so that will be on April second, and that's a public, for the public. And then, the Governor's Public Health Conference in Wichita is April fourth and fifth. Lisa and Judy Coats are going to that conference. And we have labs again. LAPC is April thirtieth, Terry, also not a notice, noon at the hospital. And April twenty-first is a Saturday. David has set up a shelter training, Red Cross Shelter Training in Beverly, and I'm gonna try to figure out the schedule so my girls can go, because if, in a lot of emergencies, that's public health's role, is to set up the shelter until Red Cross gets there and run it, so we haven't had any formal shelter training yet, so I'm gonna try to get all my girls there. But there might be a little bit of overtime, but we'll try to work it out in a week if we can. That's what we try to do, doesn't always work out that way. And that's all I have.
I was just wondering, and I know you don't have it with you today, just in the future, maybe like a, a statistical update as far as, I know you gave us one for the year overall, and just to keep us abreast of, you know, what your numbers are.
Of normal.
Yeah, through the weeks, since we've seen you, just so we have an, I mean, because I really don't have the slightest idea, I don't, you know.
Well, everything at the health department is cyclical. This is our slower time, so we have a lot of conferences and everything built into that. As soon as, probably May, when school, we'll have lots of school physicals and shots and those kind of things, so. Right now, we're kind of slow as far as walk-in clients and scheduled things, but we'll pick up here. Lisa works one day a week. She does KMB Healthy Physicals and School Physicals and the Foot Care Clinic in Sylvan and blood draws. She has chosen, and I, I suggested and she has chosen, if she doesn't have anything scheduled, she's caught up with her, her, she was working on her ICS classes, but now that she's done with those, she doesn't work. If she doesn't have anything scheduled- But now that she's done with those, um she doesn't work, if she doesn't have anything scheduled, so. And that'll continue until we start getting busy again, which is kind of. And just history-wise and I guess legally, Elpines cannot do a whole lot um on their own, they have to be supervised. If I am not in town, or if I'm gonna be gone all day, even if I'm in town, there's not a whole lot that can happen at the health department as far as appointments, because an Elpan can't work independently. Now, if I'm in the building, she she can work and Sherry's my other full-time help, so. When she was hired, there were no RNs that applied for a long time, so. She's wonderful, she can do all the work, but legally, she can't, she has to be supervised, so um so we keep Lisa. So if I wanna go on vacation, she can work some time and that kind of stuff, so. Some days, I think, I don't know, but she does, there's a lot of things that she does do, like lab draws and those kind of things. A lot of education and and she helps a lot with the paperwork that I just don't get to, so. It's one of those, we need her a lot sometimes and not so much other times, so she does another full-time job, so it's good that she can switch her schedule and not work if we don't have anything scheduled, so. Or work a half a day or whatever, so, and she's an RN, so.
Awesome.
Anything else?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, very helpful.
Deborah coming down, huh?
Well, she should be, but. She might be waiting to see one on the work light.
You wanna sneak in ahead of her?
I can start with one thing.
Or we can talk about, I don't know what you guys are gonna do on the fire doors, but before the inspectors come back, I think we better do something. We put back money from last year's uh maintenance fund to pay for them. There obviously is a great difference in chaos between the two.
What did we end up rolling over?
Thirty. I was thinking thirty, yeah.
That sounds, that sounds great, I think. Did you want to address this um, we had, we have the week's forecast. And then from Emergency Management, David Doe, it says, I interacted with the fire chief this morning and asked if they wanted the burn ban to remain in place. And of the responses I received, seven asked that it stay in place and one said that it could be lifted, so I think that's fine.
In my opinion, that's, would be the basis for my decision.
Yeah, me too. I just wanted to address it so that it.
Yeah.
Is formal.
The grass just doesn't suck up, but.
Well, and we haven't had that much come down.
There was thirty, oh.
Thirty. What did you say, Donna?
We still have fund forty-four.
But we are not finished paying Campbell and Johnson, correct? So that's where that was coming from?
Yeah.
Okay. But of the thirty, if we approve this bid for twenty-six, what did it say?
Twenty-eight, eight ninety-two. I was wondering if we don't, if we find, goes along with the next inspection.
Well, my only question is, what, I understand this is a code issue for it to function as in nursing home facility. What would be the difference if and when, as is projected, that it is no longer used in that capacity? You know, what would be the requirements of having those doors at that time? Because that could be as short as two years into the future, according to what we've been told previously, so.
If they use it for apartments, the apartments that the city has have fire doors in those too, so I would assume that they would have to be fire doors at that time too.
So if it's a residential situation, is basically, not necessarily if it's for commercial use or?
The housing authority over there does, the three-story building, those are all fire doors.
And what can we do with the doors that we're replacing?
They're no longer considered fire doors because they don't have the.
But I mean, if they're metal, do they have, they're not ra, they're not rated for any sort of, they can't be resold as fire?
Some of them are wood, I think currently.
But they can't be marketed as fire-rated for any purpose? We're not just upgrading the fire rating, they're just obsolete?
These were put in before they put the stickers, they now have a metal tag on them to give it the fire rating. And those doors were put in before they started fixing the stickers to the.
So do they have any resale value whatsoever, is my question?
I, to me, when I was in the construction business, no, but you're talking about a forty-year-old door or more. And there's nothing ornate about them or anything that would be, I would be surprised if there was a value to them. Other than if they're metal, a little bit of sound, which there wouldn't be too much.
So who's going to oversee that? I mean, that and the copper issue kind of concerns me too. I mean, if it's as much copper as he was saying, they're solid, what do you say, three-quarter inch lines? I would like to know who's going to.
I think it's. I'm sure that the door company would be more than happy to leave those doors for us, because they wouldn't have to dispose of them that way, but that would just be my guess.
I mean, I'm just wondering, I.
I don't think, I I can imagine they would have a reuse for them at any. Go ahead, Deborah.
Are you ready? Sorry, I thought I was eleven forty-five, I was in the building.
We're just kinda filling some time.
Um I was gonna be quick anyways, I just wanted to let you guys know that Galen Kisek is going to be retiring from his blade position.
Who?
Galen Kisek. Um April twenty-fifth will be his, yeah, last day. We are going to do what we, it's all right, um with others, um we'll have a, get him a retirement clock. We usually get a cake, um and have a little retirement get-together, put it out in the paper. Um we're gonna sue at Finch, people come and go, um just like that last day in the afternoon, probably like from two to four.
He said at the Finch, did he?
At the Finch.
How many years is he?
Forty-three.
Forty-three?
Yeah, I think the fifteenth of April, it'll be forty-three years.
Did you say the date is April twenty?
The twenty-fifth, yep. We're probably gonna do two to four in the afternoon.
It's a Wednesday?
Yeah, so at last day of the pay period, he's gonna work through the pay period and then retire.
Okay.
That was it?
That was it?
I did print through the charge of owners while I was upstairs, so you would have that, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess you're ready for me? Sure?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so you guys all got the letter from the Sylvan Senior Center? Should have been in a pile, one for each of you. Okay, and then I think that there was a notice of the meetings for the council on aging, I don't know that for sure, 'cause it was sealed.
Yeah, there's an envelope.
Next Tuesday, or, well, this Tuesday is their meeting at ten o'clock.
Oh.
Maybe we just got one, I don't know.
I didn't get anything.
I put it in mine.
You have it?
Yeah.
I can make copies. And I'll do my best to make sure I put on the agenda the Monday before their meetings, but then there's special meetings we're supposed to call about, so. Okay, so last week, we um discussed the dilapidated housing program. Here's your current policy.
I'm gonna go ahead and read some of it aloud. This program allows several options for Lincoln County landowners who recognize a need to dispose of a dilapidated, to, excuse me, who recognize a need to dispose of dilapidated structures at the construction demolition pit of Lincoln County landfill. The following is a list of options for disposal of dilapidated properties. Each landowner will need to assess their individual needs and choose an option that best fits their circumstances. There are four options. Residents may dispose of dilapidated structures at a reduced rate of thirty-five dollars per ton if all conditions are are met as described in section two, which is to follow. Uh option two, disposal fees will be waived if the landowner deems the property to the respective city and if all conditions are met as described in section two. Option three, refund program. Residents may dispose of structures at a reduced rate if all conditions are met. Lincoln County may refund part or all of the disposal fees previously paid if the landowner rebuilds upon the now vacant lot. Well, they're not planning on rebuilding, correct? So that's not an option.
I believe I was correct.
Or he at least didn't say that. The landowner shall be, shall build one of the following, a house, manufactured home, closed building structure, da-da-da-da-da. Option four, cost share program. Lincoln County agrees to cost share a program in which Lincoln County reduces the disposal rate by an amount equal to the amount paid by the respective city. This amount shall not exceed ten dollars per ton. So if the landowner signs over the property to the city, then this becomes the agreement between the city and the county, is how I'm taking it?
No, option two is that, option two is what happens if the property owner disposes of it and we waive all the landfill fees to the city.
If they deed the property to the city. Or the one that we're gonna. But the city, Beverly doesn't participate in the program, so.
Oh, I see what you're saying, if the city were, it's not necessarily deeded to the city in this option, the city may help cost share in the program, okay, so that's not. They don't do that, they've never done that, they don't have money to do that.
Correct, when the city of Lincoln has its cleanup days, then the city of Lincoln pays ten dollars towards disposal.
So the following conditions must be met to qualify. The regular disposal rate is sixty dollars per ton, so Lincoln County reserves the right to refuse disposal of any materials, of any materials if the conditions below are not met and puts Lincoln County at risk for violations from KEG. All non-construction demolition material must be removed prior to demolition, such as household items, clothing, toys, appliances, furniture, window drac, dracary, and or so anything that's not the part of the structure. The house must be inspected um by the station operator at the landfill prior to demolition. And the owner must contact the station operator at least one week in advance to pre-arrange the dumping of the materials. Dumping must be continuous on the day that it was pre-arranged. All rock, stone, cement, and brick foundations must be separate from the CD material and put into the designated location. And payment arrangements must be made prior to the disposal. So what is, what is the church that he said purchased it, what is the, which church is that?
I believe it's probably Beverly Community Church, yeah, community. Which would be um the fifteen dollars a ton plus the city, you know, that the city doesn't have.
So, okay, option one is we give the reduced rate of thirty-five dollars, which is down from sixty for anyone that deems it needing to come down if they own it. But you're saying the reduced rate on top of that is if the city were to contribute ten dollars to that reduced rate, which.
Rematch, whatever, if the city's up willing to do ten, then rematch with ten. But unfortunately, Beverly.
They just don't have the funds. Barnard tends to get the people to to um deed the property to them, so then that way they can dispose of it for free.
But I think the church wants the property in this situation, correct? Because it's next door.
And then I also have another unique situation in which a perfectly good home is being torn down by a, by the landowner piece by piece. And he's inquired whether or not he would qualify it as a dilapidated home, and I said technically, the home isn't dilapidated. But it probably is by now that he's started tearing it apart piece by piece. But their goal is they'll tear the house down and then they will rebuild with a single-story structure using the same material. So they're keeping as much material as they possibly can.
Then we develop, the idea of being dilapidated because the city is having our dilapidated house, do you?
But then how do you do that if they're not in the city limits?
I, see, I struggle, 'cause I I don't know how you define what's dilapidated and what's not.
Well, unfortunately, the wording of this says that this program allows options for Lincoln County landowners who recognize a need to dispose of a dilapidated structure. So basically, we're saying that the landowner deems it, and you're saying he's tearing down one to build another.
Yeah, and it was a perfectly livable home. You know, most of these structures are not livable.
Yeah, dilapidated would mean unfit for uninhabitable.
Yeah.
Maybe we should put that, add that word to the, you know.
So they halt it all to the landfill, just?
I think like just the plaster.
Yeah.
That type of stuff and then.
They're saving the dimensional number to build.
If, if that's my, that's my understanding of it, but. And they'll save like the windows and the siding and, so they're basically repurposing the house, I guess. And I think that he's paying the sixty dollars per ton, so I, I think that was why he was requiring, yeah. 'Cause they're just doing it as they go.
The only problem with that is if you do that, then it pretty much defeats the purpose of this program. Because that is the purpose of the CD pit, if I'm understanding it correctly. Anytime that you do construction remodeling, roofing, whatever it is that you're doing, when you dispose of there, the fee that we've set is sixty dollars. So in essence, this is kind of a similar.
Just kind of encouraging people to clean up their properties and. So, yeah, I I have had that and, you know, I told him, according to me, I felt like it was a dilapidated house, but um so.
Section two says that you have to have it inspected by the landfill or transfer station operator ahead of time.
All they're inspecting for is to ensure that everything has been removed. They're not inspecting as to whether or not it's dilapidated or not.
They're just inspecting to make sure, paint cans and carpet, different things that's not supposed to be in the CD.
Not construction, I see, yeah.
So if you wanna think on that.
Yeah.
And then unless you wanna make a decision, I just.
I think it, I mean, we might need to just readdress the wording and say uninhabitable, because if someone's living, let's say someone's living in a home and they had an older section of the home and they wanna demolish that and rebuild, you know, a new, it's still livable and that doesn't necessarily mean it was dilapidated just because they're.
I think we could add some more, I don't think we wanna take out the dilapidated, because that's the city's, the city's having the dilapidated program.
Yeah, I mean, I just, if you put dilapidated comma uninhabitable, made it synonymous there. Because it really doesn't say anything in this program about it being vaca- vacant or not. That would be a concern too.
Well, it was put together just off of the cities wanting to get the dilapidated.
Oh, I understand the purpose of it, but I think that those might, those little amendments might clear up some of the questionable, you know, I mean, everybody wants a reduced rate, who doesn't? I get it.
Why don't you guys review it and then you can bring back next week what you'd like to see?
Most, most rural property, they're disposed on site, so they don't have the transportation costs.
And they have to have permits.
That's a preference, so they don't have the transportation costs.
Um, okay. We've kind of discussed the ambulance billing. So I sent out letters to the people that is on the top sheet and the one company I emailed information to. And this would be the responses that I've received back. And I kind of just broke it down. On the far right hand is what the cost would be using the 2016 information because I didn't think it was really fair to do 2017 because we're kind of crossing years with it. And I put like where their location is out, so you kind of have some information. And I have the information that each of the entities that supplied it provided. The lowest one is from out of state and that is his proposal. And then this is Life Team's. Delisa is who Mitchell County uses and quite, actually quite a few counties use. But the auditors had given us her name as well because they have worked with the balancing of the books. And then this Revive, it's the only one that's doing it by per run charge. She does several, she's from Plainville, she does several counties. So she's kind of looking for smaller base to add. She thinks that she can handle it. She charges per run. She's not quite the cheapest. All of them that said they do by percentage, say they do it by percentage for a reason and that is to encourage that they will do their job and get the billing collection done.
Do you, I'm sorry to interrupt, do you have for us what your office charged the ambulance department for that year?
No, I didn't, but I can get it.
I, I would, just as a cost comparison, I mean, that might give us a good idea. Would Deborah be able to pull that up or something?
Um, not, not easily, but I can come up with it.
Okay. Does everyone understand what I was saying?
So the one, the, the one that works on the percentage, that's, that number is just a estimate.
That, that, yeah, the number off to the side is using what we collected in 2016. So I figured the percentage off based upon that. And all of them do three to four notices. Most of them say three if it says there, or three, Delisa's does four billing notices and then they turn it over to us for collection.
I'm gonna read these out. We have Delisa's medical billing out of Delph- is it Delphus?
Delphus.
Delphus.
If they will be collecting.
Yes.
Using our cost, our 2016 year numbers, she estimated six thousand eighty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents for their service to run the billing side of it. Life Team out of Wichita, eight thousand ninety-eight dollars. Revive, ambulance billing out of Plainville, four thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. And Andreas or Andreas Medical Billing out of Arlington Heights, Illinois, four thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars and eighty-five cents. And they were, three of them are doing a percentage of the cost per run. The other, the one is doing not a percentage, but a flat rate per, per run. The one out of Plainville, twenty-two dollars per run. Delisa's seven percent of actual collections. Life Team, ten percent of actual collections. Andreas, six point four two percent.
I think we need to keep it somewhat local, so I don't think we want to deal with some of that. Are we too high for the noise on?
I would agree. I would rather keep the commerce in state.
I think it could just be a better working relationship with somebody local.
Well, it helps our own economy, you know.
And Delisa, she said that she could come over and visit with you and answer any questions. And she did provide, I was looking up something else, I'm trying to look to see how much we collected. She did provide some information. And then this is the Revive. Uh, she's the Plainville one.
Revive says no contract and Life Team says six hundred dollars and Delisa doesn't say anything.
Uh, Delisa's was the seventy dollar, I, maybe that's one I didn't?
Monthly fee, so you know.
There's a monthly fee and I don't think she had a contract, but she might have. Or, for some reason, I think we did have a contract.
But there will also be collections, which I think can do, and would better job of collecting than we do.
Well, are we anywhere near the cost of what it took, what it cost the clerk's office to do that billing?
Well, you have to remember that?
I think since they're going to ICN ten, it's become?
Over our heads. We're not educated. Either that or we need to go, we need to educate staff to do it. And my, my staff does not have the time anymore to get the education that they want.
My wife's a codeur and for a layperson to try to do coding is nowadays is next to impossible.
Between the landfill and the ambulance, they reimbursed the clerk's wage three thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars. And that includes the landfill, so.
Oh.
Easily telling you for sure, but that would have been what I reimbursed my fund in 2016.
But you were billing hourly, correct?
Yes, however many hours it's.
They would notate how many hours and, okay. So you weren't getting a percentage of anything, it was just by hour?
No.
Yeah.
But honestly, we're not collecting what we should be, partly because A, we don't have the time to?
So do you think it would be, just out of curiosity for numbers sake, do you think we can collect the? Let's say half of that was ambulance, just for example, you know, or say, would it be more ambulance than landfill?
Yeah, probably, because the landfill's about seven to nine hours long.
So two thousand of it would be from the ambulance? So we're talking about at least double that? But do you think that that additional two thousand would be collected then to make up for it? Just because they'd be able to?
We budget, um, I don't think I, I don't think I brought it. Um, I budget, we budget a hundred thousand dollars to receive in revenue, which, you know, I've kind of said, I think that's a little off. When I sent out the proposals to them, I put a five-year span of what we had money collected for. And we weren't quite to a hundred thousand dollars to, like in the first year. But we were in the seventy-six thousand dollar range and last year it was forty-three thousand. So that kind of tells you, we're just, we're running behind. The other thing that I kind of liked about Delisa's, right or wrong, they, they know the ambulance service is within here and can kind of tell based upon reports what people are, what services they're even being provided. Right now, we have, we are a licensed B L S service that can provide ALS care. In order to bill for ALS care, they have to meet certain benchmarks. And I apologize, I don't remember what they are. They have to provide so many services that are considered ALS. Right now, a lot of times what Deborah will do is send those runs back down and say, it says in this report that you did this, but I need this documentation. They're more trained with that to know what they need based upon what the run reports say so that if there isn't the proper documentation, they can send it back to the, to the people and say that. This company here specifically told me they will only bill as the report is written. Um, they won't send anything back. This was the out-of-state company, the lowest.
I think we're gonna not consider them. I mean?
I, and?
No, I don't.
I mean, I agree with that.
I don't know how Revive would do, you know, without speaking to her some more or not, but I think that, that this one? I think that if you have an experienced biller, they know what is required on the reports to be able to get paid. And I think that we will be able to collect the higher rates than what we are currently.
A word, exit difference, one single word. Nancy, you're probably familiar with that.
Well, what?
I just don't want you to say, oh, that what, you're only getting, you're only charging us two thousand dollars, we'll just continue because I think there's a drastic amount of money that we could be collecting.
Yeah, if we're gonna cover that, then it's worth it. I mean, and I can see with a couple thousand dollars, that should be easily done. Um, is there not a contract? I mean, it says seventy dollars a month, but is there not a, an actual contract with Delisa's? Because?
I didn't see that there was. I think she, she had indicated that we could stop and start anytime we wanted to. Um, but let me look again. Just making sure that we should go. And I talked to her, but I've talked to so many of them, I, I don't remember what she said. I think it doesn't say no though, does it? No contract.
You know, out of curiosity, do we not have, or have, have we ever considered the option of pulling from within the staff that we already have to get the education to run that from the department itself?
I don't think, I think?
Well?
Since they, since they changed years ago, I don't think that it's possible. You could send one, my wife went to Martin County and took medical coding. And if that person's not going to stay here, you could train them and they could leave next week.
But we can contract them that they're obligated to stay for a certain amount of time if we pay for their training.
When we started with the full-time service, we always did the billing. Building, we kind of sent it down there to have them do the billing. And it became a, why do I have to do it and why, why don't they have to do it? So then we were trying to train all of them to do it. And then it become a nightmare as to why am I spending my time doing this? Why don't you guys just do it? And then we had the ambulance director trying to do it. And that ended up being a nightmare, so they sent the billing back up here to us. And we have been doing it ever since then.
I mean, I'm only saying with, with a three hundred thousand dollar plus budget for this department and we only did two hundred and twenty-six runs in the year 2016, it seems to me like out of that three hundred thousand, one person's salary would be well spent doing the billing if they're able to obtain the education. I don't know how intensive or long that course is. I would like to maybe talk some more about that, but in the meantime, I'm not opposed to turning it over to a billing company. I mean, I think that's a good option, but I think we should still talk about that. I mean, if we're talking about, there seems to be a big concern, you know, among the county, those of you who have been here a long time about job security and paying good wages. I mean, why not make it worth our own time to increase our own efficiency within the department with job security, such as someone who's educated to do the billing? I mean?
I think it's the, you know, I think they're trained to be paramedics and E M Ts and you're, you're talking about a whole different field when you go to coding. You know, it's, they don't have any training whatsoever in coding.
But how, how much of a course is that? I mean, is it a one semester?
I'm assuming it's a?
Medical terminology, it's, they're the whole list, it's a?
Yeah, but you can do four to six courses in a semester if you do a full-time school.
I'm assuming it's a year program or a two-year program from Barton.
Yeah, it's a two-year program.
So, you know?
But it all depends on how many semester hours you're doing at a time. I mean, you can do two courses for six years and it's still only a two-year program, you know? Or you can do six courses for two semesters or?
I, I'm not sure, it's just a matter of a, a course. I'm assuming it's a matter of a series of courses, but? I honestly?
I don't remember all the classes.
Well, I'm open to, you know, choosing a billing service for now, but I would not like to cease the discussion on that because that would be beneficial to have an internal ability to do that. I mean, it's, it's more justified to pay someone on a twenty-four hour shift when they don't know if they're leaving or not, to be at least producing some paperwork. If, if you're in a supervisory position especially. I mean?
Well, they do their own reports. Already do their own reports.
So if they already do the reports, then they're more than well enough versed to then turn the, the report into the coded billing, once they've obtained that information.
We ask them right now to provide the coding and they don't do it.
They don't know.
They, and?
I'm not suggesting you just throw someone into it that doesn't know what they're doing. I'm saying the county should afford on a three hundred and some thousand dollar budget, three hundred fifty thousand? What, it was almost four hundred thousand maybe this last year? I'm saying we should be able to afford to invest that time and education into one of the employees, especially if we're concerned about employee retention, wages, things like that. I mean, I'm not saying you, you ask someone to do it who doesn't know what they're doing. I'm saying you provide the education and the standardized requirement that that be part of their, you know?
I don't know if anybody around?
They're guaranteed eight hours overtime every week.
Does anybody around, do you talk to doing their own coding? I know Mitchell County, they have a full-time director and a full-time assistant director and they don't do their own coding.
Almost every county that responded, because how I got these names was I surveyed the counties and asked them who they use and very few of them still bill anymore. I can't tell you how many for sure, I could go back and count that up, but very few of them still do it.
What you run into, you know, they're there Thursday and they're back in there on Sunday. They can't make phone calls to hospitals and get the information on the coding and the next thing you know, you're way behind.
Well, and that's the one thing I did ask each of these billing entities because of the twenty-four hour service and the fact that our staff is only, if there was questions on the runs and all of them said that they would change, modify their schedule to make it work with the attendance schedules that they need assistance with. And like this, Delisa, she said, because Mitchell County does use the same ambulance programming that we do for our runs and I forget what it's called, I apologize. But she said a lot of times what she can do is just send them a message right on that program so that when they come in, in the, in the morning and look at their messages, it's right there to get what they need. And then she says a lot of times that has solved the issues. But if, if they need to get ahold of somebody on a weekend, they're more than willing to do that. Where like, like in our office, sometimes that doesn't work because at the time that we need the answers, the staff member is not down there. And then the times that they are there, we're doing other things and don't have the time to work on the ambulance billing, so.
Barton County says their medical coding certificate is forty-four hours.
And what's the cost? Which at twelve hours a semester, twelve to fifteen hours, it's basically a two-year program.
In-state? One hundred and eight. Online, a hundred and fifty.
Per credit hour?
That would be per credit hour.
Would you guys like to visit with Delisa a little bit more? She said she can come to a meeting if you would like, or?
I guess I would.
I think the Revive lady said she would as well.
Yeah, her letter said, you know, please contact the village. Yeah, her letter said, you know, please contact, did Delisa have a letter to you?
She, oh, I think I tossed it your way.
This is Revive.
You know, maybe.
Here.
Sorry.
Delisa's Medical Billing Service Incorporated mission is to provide, provide our clients with the most accurate, up-to-date medical billing services, all the while providing patient confidentiality to and for the patient. Our goal is to increase your reimbursement and decrease denied claims while reducing your stress. We strive to adapt to the services requested by the client that will most benefit their needs. We are confident we can increase your revenue. Procedure guide, guidelines can be revised, but only by agreement of the two parties. There's a lot of detailed information here about the billing and reviewing of claims Timeline for the first submission of claim normally can be completed in 21 days or less. Delisa's Medical Billing Service has been in business since 1996. We continue to train and educate our employees to the ever-changing CMS rules and regulations. Two annual seminars or, and/or webinars are mandatory by our employees. Delisa Mary owner received the RHIT degree from Hutchinson Community College in 2014 and DMBS prides itself in having a registered health information tech on staff. This one is the letter from Revive, dear Lincoln County clerk, I just want to let you know that I would love to do your billing for you. I am currently billing for the Stockton Ambulance Service, Plainville EMS, Graham County EMS, Canton Ambulance Service, Rollins County EMS, and the Logan County EMS. You may contact them if you wish to. I am set up to electronically send your Medicare and Blue Cross claims post-payments and send monthly statements. I send a monthly pending list of the claims that I'm still working on along with the balance owed. When the claims have been completed, they are sent back to you by priority mail to keep. I do not have any employees, so I would be doing all of the work myself. I can also help you with any of your enrollment revalidations with Medicare, Blue Cross, and Medicaid. My charges are $22 per claim with no setup fee, contract, or monthly fee. I will send three statements and if there is no response, I will recommend them for collections. If the claim is denied, it will be rebuilt at no additional cost. The insurance payments and remits will come directly to you. I can bill any of your claims that have not been billed for, however, there is only a one-year time limit to the, to file timely, except for some Medicaid programs which are And I think that other company was pretty extremely high. Life team out of Wichita was 8,000, which is significantly higher than even the next Based on the 2016 numbers.
I like the fact that Delisa's will do the collections. I think you're gonna be more successful at collections when you have an outside person doing it.
We used to contract with central states, but they had gotten to where they weren't very effective. Um, the only thing that we do do is send to, set off each year to keep their tax return. Um, other than that, we really don't have a collection agency that we work with, we just continue to send out statements.
Out of curiosity, how many of ours are going to, would be going to collections? Because I think that's going to determine whether we wanna pay that $70 a month additional fee to Delisa's versus not having a monthly fee, fee to Revive, but they're not gonna do follow-up on collections. So how much in collections are we missing in any given year?
Mm-hmm.
It'd be considerable, I'm sure.
I think that would be the determining factor, to be honest. Because it's not that, I mean, it's a $2,000 difference in their biz, but it's a two, it's a $2 fee per account plus this 7% on the collections that Delisa does, which would be worth it if a certain percent, like I'd say, you know, we'd have to look at the numbers, but if a certain percentage of our income would be going to collections. Could we revisit this next week?
Mm-hmm.
I think that's the only thing I'd like to consider between the two companies.
It's about a $40,000 difference in the rest, 49, 6,000 or something.
Well, 4,972, 6,088.
Would you guys want to talk to both of these organizations? Give them the opportunity to kinda explain what they.
I guess we could.
Do.
Sure.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I'll see if they both would be able to, uh, Delisa and Revive, correct?
What's that?
Delisa and Revive.
Yes, yes, I think those are the only two I would heavily consider right now.
And then I'll see how much we have in collection at the state now and how much we know needs to go to collection. Because we have, you can't send non-residents to the state of Kansas, so we have highway people, we tend to get a lot of interstate people that you can't collect from, no matter how hard you try. Um, but I'll see what we can come up with for numbers.
Yeah. Um, back to the dilapidated housing program, I would suggest that if we know, so are we saying that Barnard participates actively?
Yeah.
And Sylvan?
Barnard.
Barnard does, they take possession of the houses, what Barnard does, whatever.
And has Sylvan contributed their $10 per ton for anything? I mean, I'm just wondering if this portion of the program is applicable at all.
Well, they will when they take part of that CDBG grant funding, that program that they were, what they approved for, that will be part, we said we would waive some of the landfill fees, so.
Haven't they had a couple that they hauled off recently, they got possession of the lot and they hauled up.
I'm the wrong.
Ten or four months.
I'm the wrong person to ask because I don't always know that.
I'm pretty sure they did.
Well, I would propose an amendment that we could say that, you know, nonprofit entities could possibly qualify for the reduced rate and it doesn't necessarily have to be, because this is based on an individual landowner being the, um, participant in the cost share program. So you're saying you had mentioned something about $25 to him, which it's supposed to be 35.
That would be 35, I'm 10.
See, we're, we're waiving, we don't bill Lincoln County the $10, we just, when, when they participate.
We just don't collect.
Number four, correct. We bill the city $10 and we bill the land, the landowner 15. So in this instance, I would assume that we would bill, you guys would be willing to waive the $10.
To the city.
For the county and then you would collect the 10.
The 25.
The 25. Unless you wanna waive this.
But who are collecting the 20? Oh, collect the 25 all from the landowner.
Yeah.
Since the city doesn't participate.
But that still is not within the parameters of the way this is set up, is all I'm saying. I mean, that's not an option according to this. It's a special circumstance which.
Which is what he was asking.
We're gonna do that every time, you know, maybe we need to.
I think, you know, it's too bad everybody doesn't participate because they have multiple houses they could take down, but I don't, they just don't have the money.
That's why I said.
Do we have any idea what a house is bringing in in tonnage?
No, cause it depends on how well they sort and how much dirt they scoop. There's no way to really know. How well the.
If they don't bring in the foundation, the dirt, they're a little more careful how they load it, they could, they could double the cost just by hauling in the foundation and dirt, trees. We've got to haul trees in with the house and everything else.
And when you send them the bill, then they wanna say, oh, well, but they had trees in it, well.
You're paying by the weight.
They went to CD, that's a, it wasn't separated.
It, it's not that I don't want to help with the situation, it's just that I'm not a fan of making special exemptions when you have a policy. I would rather change the policy so that we are acting in line with the policy every time instead of making an exception outside of these parameters because then it basically makes this document invalid. And, and I know we had a lot of discussions and you guys use the term, uh, opening a can of worms or whatever, if you're going to do certain things, it, it had, discussion was about, you know, the road situation with Steve Schneider. But again, it, it all depends on the documentation that you're using. So I would suggest that if we're going to make an example, uh, situation, that it just be part of an amendment that we do to this particular program because.
I don't have a problem ending the program, but we have to thought into it.
I agree, I agree. This says what, 2004? So it's been over 10 years, it could use a, a facelift. Okay, so can, will you revisit that next week? I have a few notes for changes. Maybe it could just say if your city does not participate, if it's within the city limits and it does not participate, or if you are a nonprofit organization, the reduced rate changes from 35 to 25 or something, you know, there could be different price ranges depending on what your purpose is. I mean. Just a suggestion.
Yeah, I don't know. Same.
Okay, um, then when do you guys want to return to your summer hours? Because we have people wanting to get on the agenda in May already, so more of those.
May 1st, well, we usually do May 1st, I mean.
Okay, is that all agreed? Do you want a motion? Do you want me just to say?
Can put the board approved.
Do you want a motion? Maybe we go back to eight o'clock, 8:00 AM meeting times on first Monday in May, whatever it is.
Um, 7th.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Have motion, a second, is there any discussion? If not, all of the papers are out.
No.
Do you have much for next week, John?
I don't know right offhand, but.
I was wondering if you're ready to come in, maybe.
Okay. Um, I have a couple more things, sorry, don't mean to bore you, but.
That's fine, that's fine.
Um, okay, so the question was asked about the website. So here was what was on the website before. The girls don't remember when they changed it, but they kind of remember some county employee, and I think it was probably the health department went to, if you remember, they had that secret mystery shopper that came in to the community and they kind of reviewed our community, um, went to some stores, did some different things, looked at websites. Apparently the website was one of the things that they criticized, said it wasn't very user-friendly and so, um.
The county website or the live Lincoln County?
The county webs.
I thought it was the live Lincoln.
I don't know, I didn't attend the meeting.
I didn't either, I just.
That was the.
I think they went to law, don't they?
Message that we had gotten was that the county's website wasn't very informational. So they kinda started to change things and then Hannah made the change, but she kinda thinks that somebody come in and questioned whether or not you guys had formally adopted these code of conducts and she had, we had a very long time ago, if you kinda look, this, this is a printout of when we first formed the web page. Somehow we ended up keeping it because we don't know what was on there before, but somebody criticized the, the code of conduct and asked for the, where the commissioners had approved it, so she thought she had done something wrong. So what the wording is on there now is taken directly out of your guys' desk handbook from the Kansas County Commissioners Association's Commissioner Desk Book. And then, um, a couple of months ago, you guys received this and it just fluttered back onto my desk and I didn't really do anything about it. But that is from the KC, or, yeah, from the KC, that apparently you can read it, but it talks about the code of ethical conducts and what they want you guys to do, so.
Yeah, I think you go to email this.
Yeah, so the executive director. Randall Allen, isn't it? I can't read his writing. Basically, it has six principles about the Kansas County Commissioners Association Code of Ethical Conduct for County Commissioners. Principle one, county commissioner should be vigorously dedicated to the democratic ideals of honesty, openness, and accountability in all public matters involving county government. Principle two, a county commissioner should model decorum, respect for others, and civility in all public relationships. Principle three, a county commissioner should actively participate stewardship of the county's human, fiscal, and material resources. Principle four, a county commissioner should strive for excellence in continuance, continuous learning and personal development and in all operations of county government. Principle five, a county commissioner should perform the duties of public office with fairness and impartiality so as to enhance public confidence in county government. Principle six, a county commissioner should neither seek nor accept any favor from any source that may be offered to influence his or her official decision-making. And then what was on our website on Lincoln County prior to the new, um, wording that's on there, it was a code of ethical conduct for county commissioners. A county commissioner should be vigorously dedicated to the democratic ideals of honesty, openness, and accountability in all public matters involving county government. So most of these are actually word for word. Should model decorum, respect, and, respect for others and civility in all public relationships. Should actively practice stewardship of the county's human, fiscal, and material resources. Should, these are word for word. Should strive for excellence and continuous learning and personal development and in all operations of county government. Should perform the duties of public office with fairness and impartiality so as to enhance public confidence in county government. Should neither seek nor accept any favor from any source that may be offered to influence his or her official decision-making. So in response to what you said was criticism, I would say we pay every year to belong to the Kansas Association of Counties and as commissioners, as a board, we should be supporting what they're putting out and if we don't support it, I don't think we should be paying to belong to their organization.
I don't really care what's on your guys' webpage, in fact, I almost just took everything down except for your meeting times, your names, and your, your telephone numbers and then you guys can decide what you want on the webpage. Um, I, I don't wanna be criticized. When we created the webpage, we did a lot of copy-pasting. We went out to other counties, we found wording that we liked, we copy-pasted it in. Um, I think that when somebody questioned about the code of conduct, they were, or code of conduct, they were asking for the commissioner's signed official code of conduct. This board has never officially adopted any form of code of conduct, so I think that's part of the reason why Hannah felt like maybe she needed to take it down. I don't really care what you guys have up, what you don't have up, I just don't wanna be criticized or, or questioned about it. I would rather it be something that you guys all want. Um, it's really not my decision, we just try to do the best that we can on those pages. Um, some, some departments want to take ownership of their pages and some of them don't. Um, so we just do the best that we can and I don't care what we have, you know, if you don't, if you don't like the wording that's up there now, I just don't want something that's too much, I don't.
No, I mean, I don't have a problem with what's on there. I just noticed that this was not, and I, you know, we do pay to belong to this organization. I honestly didn't realize it was verbatim from their site when I, I just remembered reading it and I thought, oh, this is concise and clear and well-worded and now you're showing, and I've got, I've received this before, but I never put it together that it, that it was actually word by word, but we pay to belong to Kansas Association of Counties. Ipso facto, we would automatically accept their code of ethical conduct, or if we don't, why do we pay them? I, it, it could just be added back on, in my opinion, and I think what you put is informative. It tells people what is expected of a county commissioner in their decision-making process, but this is also part of, you know, we've had a lot of conversations in here and I think Aljo Wallace, you, the word you've used a lot is trust. And if you look at the second to last one, which I think would be number five, it says, should perform the duties of public office with fairness and impartiality so as to enhance public confidence, which would be trust in county government. And if we are having a trust issue in this county, it's because the public is seeing us, our board, as making decisions with partiality. I would like to see it, I, I would like to see it back on the website just because I think it's important and if you don't wanna adopt it specifically as our board, then I think we need to question why we belong to the Kansas Association of Counties.
Well, and I could put two, we thought about adding the citing of where this was taken from because they took it out of the handbook so we can cite the handbook. But then the question comes in is what order do you wanna list it as, um, on the website? Do you want the code of ethics first and then? Do you want the code of ethics first and then the other second, or vice versa? Does it matter?
I don't think it matters to me. If you're going, if you're going to take the time to read it, you'll read the whole thing, but we could even put Kansas Association of Counties under this one, since it is derived directly from there.
Well, and it's actually the Kansas County Commissioners Association. The KC takes care of the Kansas County Commissioners Association.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's a part of the Association of Counties.
Yeah. So, and with that realm, if you go on there now and kind of look, we've, from looking at other counties, we've kind of found an easier way to add the minutes and the agendas, and, you know, in December, I had Brittany come in and help us add what is up there, and I was going to have her do that again during the spring break, but we can't quite get the search features to work correctly, so the programmers are working on that now. But basically, what it will be is like an open document library, and then apparently, like, every county office can have their own document library and link to it and show up just their document library, so we'll have like a massive one, and then. I just made the decision to have Brittany come in and help us, partly because she's helped us in the past, and I did pay her this last time for doing that, and I would like to do that again, but then the other parts of me thought, maybe what I really need to do is just put an ad in the newspaper for a temporary, part-time person to help us through and get caught up with everything that is being requested. Not just that, but I could use help for elections. And then I had visited with Kelly Larson about the interns, and, you know, she had asked why we didn't apply for an intern to come in and help, you know, each department kind of have, and she suggested, you know, and I told her, I said, well, I don't have enough hours for a full-time person or to have the time to get a full-time person to figure out what they're doing, and part of that internship grant funds is that you commit, that you will give them forty hours a week for X amount of time, and they get paid ten dollars an hour. However, she made a good suggestion that maybe we hire or apply for an intern for the entire county, and then maybe have them do like a couple of weeks' rotation, or a couple of days a week, or something like that. So I didn't know how you felt about that, but I think the application period is in August, so we would need to kind of decide that for the following year if we wanted to, but I could see, our office can always use extra help, especially during elections. It's incredibly busy.
I think it'd be great to apply for a rotating intern. I mean.
I just don't know if I can get the other offices on board, but.
Yeah, I think you need to, we need to get.
If I can get everybody on board, would you be?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
But I don't, you know, if you can only do a day a week, you know, you're going to have to get somebody else involved.
How much time is going to be freed up without doing ambulance billing if we do that next month?
Anywhere from ten to twenty-five hours a month. The least is ten hours, and then when she's really, really trying to work on it, but with that, we're going to be bammed up into election, because I, I'm just waiting on the state to send me certifications to start on that process, and then all of our time, and that's part of the reason why ambulance billing has gotten behind, because I'm sorry, I'm greedy, my job, my employees work for me first, and they work for other departments second, and so.
I think it's a good idea if you just go ahead and put the ad in the paper. Personally, I mean, I think that's a fair way to, you know, to request help.
I feel like it's, it would be temporary. I don't really want just somebody to help us when we're in our busy time.
Is this mostly just data entry?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And they could handle it filing.
You might have some summer students home from college that don't necessarily, you know.
Want a permanent job, yeah.
And they're here and available and, you know, in the academic world, able to help you perform those tasks.
So did we decide, does it matter what order?
Doesn't matter.
Okay, to add it? Is there any other changes on, I don't even have what the, they just printed out.
Oh, what I was looking at, I would like to see, I was looking, and correct me if I just don't find it, but I don't see a list of the boards.
Uh, like the appointed boards that you're, there isn't, I don't believe.
I mean, I see like Lincoln County Fair Board.
I think we just need to the.
Yeah.
To their websites, yeah.
But I think it would be, I mean, we appoint purely, put their personal names on there. I'm not suggesting that you have to update their names and we put their names out there all the time.
Well, I think they don't have the names on there. If someone was contacting a board member, I think.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
We can work on that.
I just think that's a good thing for people to know, you know, that the boards exist, how many there, I think like a brief description, how many people are on the board, what the term of their rotation, their term limit is, or what their, how many years their term is, when their meetings are. What else was I thinking? Not necessarily their bylaws, but maybe just a brief description of what they are, what they do.
That would be kind of helpful, because to be honest with you, I just was referring people to people on the board, because I have no idea what they do.
And I'm here asking the same questions, like the preservation board questions. I was surprised how many people we had. So we had three members that, whose seats are in, expiring now, but we had seven additional people all for that one board, and I thought, do they know what this is about? Because I honestly don't.
Makes it farcist.
Well, I will tell you something else. Kelly Larson, if you really want to put somebody to help organize that board and maybe revamp, she'd be the person to do, because she's very interested in the stored properties, and in fact, I think she's probably the one that spearheaded almost all of those people to submit their names.
Be interested?
Yeah.
Well, and maybe we could do, as Mrs. McReynolds was saying, you can have a board, but you can also have additional, what is the word for that?
She called them, I know the library has some like friends of the library that could be, yeah.
Or just expand the numbers on the board. I mean, nine is what I think we said are on there, and we have, of course, we, do we give any money to the preservation board?
They have tried to run for half a mill levy. At the same time that they ran for the rescue squad and it was defeated, and then another time, I think they ran and it was defeated, and then they came in a couple of years ago and was wanting to run it again, but the lid was off and the commissioners could have approved just giving the money. Now, I think if they went back to want money, we'd have to.
Is the rescue squad a half a mill?
Yes.
And how many people are on that?
Probably twenty-something.
Oh, really?
I think.
It's basically mostly fire guys that will.
We don't have, are you asking, there's a board? No, you guys, oh, there's no board. No, they pretty much don't let you guys help them if they need something.
So then who makes the decisions to spend their money?
Their.
Small amounts, they make them under, they have a director, or what do you want to call it?
Other than that, if they are making a big purchase, they normally come and ask you guys.
Yeah.
I just think that we need to relook at this whole board situation, because what I'm seeing is, we have separate designated mills. We have two mills for the LCCA, we have two mills for the LCEDF, we have a half a mill for the rescue squad. All of their boards and the people that spend their money are elected or appointed or validated in different ways, but they get their money the same way. I don't see a consistency or continuity, and then we have these other boards that have a different length, you know, like I think the LCCA term length is different than a lot of the other ones, and just like we said, we talked earlier about the preservation board, oh, two or three years, you know, maybe we could just try to get some more structure and say, maybe we'd get more involvement if we actually put it out there on the website and said, this is the board, this is what they do, this is how long their terms are, these are the districts by which they represent. You know, I know, I happen to know that LCCA has ten members, and it's like, they have their own five districts according to the map, you know, so like the city centers have one, the city centers have one, the senior centers have one, and then there are these by township districts. But I'm not seeing any consistency with those groups receiving this money, whether it's out of the general fund, or whether it's a separate mill. It's like, we don't have the same setup in any two situations.
Well, for instance, economic development, the county didn't, that's not the county's deal. We have nothing to do with it.
Well, that's not true, because we collect the money.
Well, we collect the money, but we collect the money for the schools, and we collect the money for everybody that gets it from taxes. We're charged for collecting money.
Well, and the fact that their board is elected, I would say, makes me more comfortable than appointed, when they're getting that money because the public voted in.
Yeah, or any kind of foundation.
Of course, their reelection process is not like our reelection process.
It's internal, I know.
Yeah, and she was talking to me about maybe trying to change that up a little bit to where maybe they go off the registered voters, because they have people currently that come in to vote, and they haven't registered, but they believe they're registered to vote, but they haven't registered with the. Yeah, so it's creating kind of some conflict.
But that can, a lot of that can be clarified when you say, click here and read, you know, the information just hasn't been compiled in a central area where everyone knows, and I just feel like it's our duty to provide information to the public so that whether it's us or any other three people in the whole world, the information is all the same and it's accessible to everyone. Right now, you have to understand, I come into this position, and everyone wants to criticize because you haven't been around, and you don't know this, and you don't know that. How could anyone figure any of this out? I mean, you have to literally ask piece by piece by piece by piece to put it together. And I'm not the smartest person in the world, but I'm also very capable, and it's been extremely difficult to sort out all of the information and the details when so much of it is just by whom you know, or by what experiences you've had, and it doesn't make it fair to the next person in line for my seat, or your seat, or your seat, or anyone else's, an elected official, or any other board member. It's just not fair to not have access to that information, and that's why I've been having this push a year long now for the transparency that's needed, and, you know, take it as a criticism or not, if you were new, it wouldn't be a criticism to you, but because you've been here a long time, you take it personally, and I understand that, but it's just matter of fact. We need some sort of continuity and consistency in how we present the information, so that any Joe out there, and we only have three thousand people, and that includes children in this county, so there are not that many people to get this information out to, and, I mean, I think just the fact that we advertised for board members and got some new blood interested is a huge step in the right direction, so I thank you for doing that. It's been very important in my eyes.
How long have you lived here?
Ten years.
Ten years, and you never sought out information on any of this stuff?
Oh, I've sought out quite a bit of information, quite a bit of information, but it depends on what your, it depends on how much time availability you have, what your interests are, what your assets are, you know, what qualifications you bring to the table for certain things. One group is not any more important than another, however, there's a lot of differentiation in the money that's being thrown out there as far as funding one event or one organization over another, so that's where, that's where the discrepancies come into play. And if we are the ones that are in charge of handing out that money, or seeing that it is appropriately distributed, then that information should be available, the details of where that money is going and who's spending it, or for what purpose, that should be readily available.
As far as I know, our budget information has always been readily available.
Can, is it okay if we move on? I have a few more things.
Are we, can we work on getting the boards on the website?
Okay, yeah, I wrote that down. I can't guarantee it's going to happen soon.
No, I understand. It's a lot of work.
Okay, so, I'm just providing you information. I don't really feel like I've been asked for it yet, but I'm going to just provide it, because I know one has been asking for it, but this is a letter that I gave Alexis a long time ago, and it has, on the backside is each of the resolutions, and then the very last one is the very first mill levy question. I cannot find any resolutions for it, and I don't believe that it was ever set by a charter resolution, because I think that the charter resolution would have been cited in it, if it had been. And I, and I know, I believe that Alan Serene had asked me for some dates, and I think he was going to try to go back to the Lincoln Sentinel and see if he could find some advertisements and et cetera.
I've done that.
But I just cannot find any resolutions for the first half mill, the very, so it's kind of in backwards order. I apologize. I probably shouldn't put it backwards.
Okay, so this is dated February sixth, two thousand and fourteen. Attention to me, because I was doing some research on behalf of the Sylvan Group Senior Center, Sylvan Senior Center, and it says, Dear Ms. Flug, enclosed is a copy of Lincoln County Charter Resolution two thousand and four C dash zero one, which granted an additional one-mill levy for services to the elderly as requested. I have also enclosed Charter Resolution ninety-eight C two, which granted a one-half mill increase to the original one-half mill being levied. I have researched extensively over the last several weeks to find a resolution and/or minutes of discussion on levying the original one-half mill levy approved in the August nineteen ninety-four election, but have had no luck finding any information concerning how the original mill levy was requested. I did, however, find a ballot that had the special election question on it, and have enclosed a copy for you to reference. And then, please let me know if you have any questions, and that came from Doc.
Yeah, and so. So when anybody asks me, they're all free together with your letter, so I just give them the letter.
Oh, that's fine.
Because I figure it explains, you know, that I can't really find anything. Okay, and so then last week, it was asked about the annual report, and so here's the two thousand and sixteen annual report, and they did finally bring me the detailed.
Itemized?
Yes, and then here is the two thousand and seventeen for the Council on Aging. And I'm just going to say, when you look at this form, and you guys can give me instruction, I've just been doing things the way Doris always did it, and I'm sure she did it the way Vic and Lilla Page always did it, but on the bottom of the front form, it says that the commissioners have reviewed it. Now, this is a form that we get from somebody, so then that way we don't have to make it, and so I don't really know if there's any state statutes that require you to inspect everything, but if you guys want to start inspecting all of the annual reports that are submitted, please let me know, and I'll start bringing them down for you to approve them, but. And if I have provided something that I shouldn't, I apologize. I don't mean to offend anybody. Also, when they brought the two thousand and sixteen detail, they also brought me the two resignations, copies of the two resignations, because I may have made a comment to somebody that until I saw it in writing, I wouldn't really consider them resigned.
Well, I'm just going to read the charter resolution here. This one's two thousand and four dash C O one, a charter resolution exempting the Board of County Commissioners of Lincoln County from the provisions of KSA seventy-nine fifty twenty-two and amendments thereto concerning service programs for the elderly. Be it hereby resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Lincoln County, Kansas, the Lincoln, the County of Lincoln, Kansas, by the power vested in it by KSA nineteen one oh one A and KSA nineteen one oh one B, as provided by KSA seventy-nine fifty thirty-six B, hereby elects to exempt itself from the provisions of KSA seventy-nine fifty twenty-two. The following is hereby added to the provisions enabled by KSA seventy-nine fifty twenty-eight and the amendments thereto. Expenses incurred for the improvement, maintenance, regulation, expansion, and operation of Lincoln County service programs for the elderly of up to one mill, in addition to the existing authorization of up to one mill, upon all taxable tangible property in the county in any given year, to be effective until said charter ordinance is rescinded by this board or its successors. This charter resolution shall be published once each week for three consecutive weeks in the official county newspaper in compliance with KSA nineteen one oh one B. So would that have been a requirement in the year of eighty-nine when they made the original election? Wouldn't it have been?
I don't know, because there's no, there's no resolution to say that, so.
In twelve or thirteen years, correct?
The only thing I can think of is state statutes, but it's hard to find the state statutes, and I don't think the question cites a state statute, but once a state statute has been repealed, the wording is changed, and unless you happen to have a copy of it, it's very difficult to find.
This charter resolution shall be submitted to a referendum of the people in accordance with KSA nineteen one oh one B C, and shall become effective from and after certification of its passage by a majority of the electorate voting at the general election to be held November second, two thousand and four, upon canvassing by the Board of County Commissioners on November fifth, two thousand and four. And then that's signed by the commissioners then, which were Terry Finch, Dwight Heller, Doug, and Doug Gummel. The next one is ninety-eight C two, a charter resolution exempting the Board of County Commissioners of Lincoln County, Kansas, from the provisions of KSA seventy-nine fifty twenty-two and amendments thereto concerning service programs for the elderly. Be it hereby resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Lincoln County, Kansas, the County of Lincoln, Kansas, by the power vested in it, I'm going to skip through that. Basically, it says, let's see, the following is hereby added to the provisions enabled by KSA seventy-nine fifty twenty-eight and amendments thereto. Expenses incurred for the improvement, maintenance, regulation, expansion, and operation of Lincoln County service programs for the elderly of up to one-half mill, in addition to the existing authorization of up to one-half mill. upon all taxable, tangible property in the county in any given year to be effective until said charter ordinance is rescinded by this board or its successors. And then this charter resolution shall be submitted to a referendum of the people in accordance with KSA nineteen one oh one B C, et cetera, same thing as the last one. Okay, so this is the second one, because it says an authorization for up to one-half mill in addition to the existing authorization of up to one-half mill. And then the one from two thousand and four cites that as being a whole mill. And it, and it's asking, it's saying that it will authorize up to one mill in addition to the existing authorization of up to one mill, which is actually two half mils. So we don't have, so do we know what year that other one was? Because I just said ninety-eight, and that was the second one. So is it?
The first one is that pulled back the election.
Oh, ninety-four, excuse me. So we don't have the charter resolution, but we have the official ballot question. Um, Lincoln County, August second, nineteen ninety-four. Special questions submitted. To vote in favor of any questions submitted upon this ballot, make a cross or check mark, dah dah dah. Shall the following be adopted? Shall an annual tax of not to exceed one-half mill be levied in Lincoln County, Kansas, to fund a service program for the elderly? So, the question is, is this even legitimate without having a charter resolution signed by the commission to do that?
I'm not an attorney, but I would imagine it probably depends on what the statutes were in nineteen ninety-four, which unless somebody knows how to retrieve statutes that have been.
Amended?
Well, what the statutes were in nineteen ninety-four.
But I'm saying, do we have statutory authority to continue taxing for something that we don't have a charter resolution?
We have the statutory authority that was set by the election. So once the election was, was held, that half mill is set until it's repealed by election.
Okay.
And that, I think, is in the election statutes. And at, at the time, in nineteen ninety-four, the tax lid would have been in effect. In fact, I think the tax lid was in effect until the late nineties. And, um, so the only way to have an additional mill levy to exceed your budget to above, to go above the tax lid was to do these elections. Well, when the tax lid was removed, they struck every single statute that required an election. So my assumption is the services for the elderly had their own set of statutes. And then once the tax lid was removed, they repealed all of them because they were no longer necessary. Now the tax lid is back in. But I am not an attorney, so I really have no idea. It's my assumptions.
But basically what I'm reading, it's worded verbatim twice here, once in nineteen ninety-eight and then again in two thousand and four. That, um, expenses incurred for the improvement, maintenance, regulation, expansion, and operation of Lincoln County service programs for the elderly. But we are missing the, I think, Dawn, was there another ballot question? Because I remember seeing the other ballot question, and it said, shall the Board of County Commissioners collect?
Well, all, all of those were ballot questions. I just gave you the ballot, actual ballot question. I can pull.
Just out of, yeah, I mean, I remember reading that particularly in one of those.
I have a portion of what was the military ballot, um, in two thousand and fours. And it just basically says the same, shall the following be, shall the Board of County Commissioners? But I think, doesn't that describe the ballot language in the resolution, the charter? Doesn't it say, shall the following be adopted?
This charter resolution shall be submitted to a referendum.
Okay, well, here is what the ballot question was in two thousand and four. Now, might say that's my military ballot offline.
Shall the Board of County Commissioners of Lincoln County, Kansas, be authorized to levy a tax in any given year in an amount not to exceed one mill in addition to the existing authorization of up to one mill upon all taxable, tangible property in the county pursuant to Charter Resolution two thousand four C O one adopted by the Board of County Commissioners on August second, two thousand four, for expenses incurred for the improvement, maintenance, regulation, expansion, and operation of Lincoln County service programs for the elderly. So basically what I'm reading is that the commission receives the money and is charged with determining what is a service program for the elderly. And it says service programs plural.
Do you have something you wanna talk about Alexis?
Well, I was, I had suggested several weeks ago that we start here by looking at the charter resolution to see what the purpose of the money is. And it looks to me like any elderly service program is eligible for this tax money. It is not designated to go to any one single distribution source.
I don't believe anyone ever said it was.
Well, I'm just, we were, we were validating through the actual language of the charter resolution where the money comes from and to whom and for what purposes. So, given that inspection of the documents, um, are you still opposed to independently funding organizations who request money from that mill levy for, to provide services for the elderly?
You're asking if I want all those come before this board? Yes, I am. I think there is a more easier way to do that. Now, do I think we have problems? Yes. I think we probably have organizational problems. I think we probably have personality prob, personality problems. And unfortunately, if money was the problem, I don't think we'd have any problem solving it. But I think money's the only, is just the tool. It's kinda like the gun in the schools. It's being used. And I guess, I really feel we need to, to look at the programs and look at how we use the money wisely. And am I ready to make a decision? Heavens, no. I learn something new about every day about this, and I'm still sorting through the stuff.
Okay.
But I, but do we have a problem? Yes, we have a problem. Is it the money? No. There's plenty of money.
Um, well, we did receive correspondence here today that we didn't go over with the minutes. Uh, it's dated March twenty-third, two thousand eighteen, and it's signed by the officers of the Sylvan Senior Center. Um, addressed to the Lincoln County Commissioners. We want to thank you for the time you've spent discussing the issues the Sylvan Senior Center faces as an independent five oh one C three, recognized public charity. We appreciate the time you've listened to the difficulties we've faced voluntarily subordinating ourselves all of these years to a politically-appointed Council on Aging Board in order to receive even a small fraction of the elderly service tax with which this politically-appointed board has been entrusted. We appreciate your willingness to consider our need for a timely grant of funds each year. The amount we seek represents but a small fraction of the total elderly service tax you are collecting from all Lincoln County taxpayers, including the entire senior community. We are hopeful that when you make the next biannual distribution of the elderly tack, elderly service tax in the coming months, you will give the taxpayers of Sylvan Grove and the western half of Lincoln County at least a fair amount of those proceeds into which they have all paid in order to fund some of the programs and services so many of these residents look forward to at the Sylvan Senior Center. We appreciate your recent feedback, but our organization will never again subordinate ourselves to your politically-appointed Council on Aging Board. We will not rescind our public proclamation of our decision. We are an independent, nonprofit organization that has five oh one C three recognition from the IRS. We are senior citizens. We have paid our taxes and dues all our lives. Many of us have volunteered countless hours for our communities. Some have even served our country in military service. We deserve the trust and respect of this commission, and we expect it. We have not been trusted nor respected by your politically-appointed board. The recent made-up complacency requirement to hand over our visitor log sign-in sheets is just the latest example of the onerous and legally questionable demands your politically-appointed board has hampered with over the years as a condition of receiving any grant funding. We checked around, and funding institutions only need statistical demographic patronage data. They do not need to know the actual names of people who walk through an organization's door, when and for what purpose. To ask for that privileged information is widely seen as improper, to say the least. After careful consideration from this point forward, we will not hand out signature sign-in sheets with our members' personal information to the Council on Aging or even this commission as a condition of receiving a grant in the future. Doing so violates the privacy of our members and patrons. This is exactly the kind of bad governance your politically-appointed board does, and it impedes the efforts of the senior centers. We will continue to keep visitor sign-in sheets, but we will compile demographic reports from those sign-in sheets for public dissemination. We will provide visitor counts with demographic breakdowns and also include some breakouts for individual events, but we will no longer release the individual names of those who walk through our doors nor divulge in which events individually named members participate or who they choose to associate with when they walk through our doors. We will not submit to an audit through your politically-appointed board. The call for an audit was for the Council on Aging, which has been getting hundreds of thousands of dollars from the county and was caught keeping tens of thousands of dollars a year undistributed with over one hundred thousand in their coffers at times. The council's attempt to divert public attention and turn this into an audit of the Lincoln and Sylvan Senior Centers has backfired on them. We now know they refused open records requests in violation of state law. It certainly appeared to us that they lawyered up in a last-ditch effort, at, attempt to block the release of the information we and others sought. They failed in that attempt. Their financial information is now out in the public where it belongs. For the senior centers, the council changed the rules for the audit on more than one occasion, and the latest demands included having us create corporate financial report and/or disclosure statements that in the, in themselves would cost thousands of dollars to have done by a CPA firm just to have something to audit in the first place. Regarding the issue of public trust, which was recently brought up at the commission meeting, the issues are transparency and a matter of law. If the appointed Council on Aging had been more transparent with their use of mill levy funds and the huge amounts of money they were retaining in their own bank accounts year after year, there would never have been calls to have them audited. Having senior citizens face civil actions seeking protective orders in the past because they sought this information didn't exactly create trust in the Lincoln County community. When the council refused Kansas Open Records Act requests, that didn't build trust with the community either. As a nonprofit which is wholly funded, funded from the county with a county-approved appointed board that acts like a public agency, the Council on Aging always has been subject to the Kansas Open Records Act and Kansas Open Meetings Act. Your politically-appointed board has been off, unlawful in its actions regarding these very important state laws in the past. That is the complacency problem you should be concerned about, not whether the Sylvan Senior Center bought candy for our senior patrons to hand out to kids during a Halloween event, which was one of the latest Council on Aging-inspired compliance violations used to malign the good works of our organization. Even when the Council on Aging was advised by their own paid attorney that they should comply with the Kansas Open Records Law, the Council on Aging barely got a majority vote to follow this important law, and had it not been for Sylvan's and our district's vote on the council board to follow the law, your own council might still be violating Cora to this day. The fact the council used elderly service money to pay for this attorney speaks volumes. This is also not the first time your politically-appointed board has used precious elderly service money to hire attorneys and mediators to fight efforts to open their books to the public. Perhaps you did not know this, but neither the Sylvan Senior Center nor the Lincoln Senior Center are subject to Cora or coma. You might be surprised by this. It is well-established in Kansas that merely receiving public monies does not make a private, nonprofit Kansas corporation subject to these acts. This is in clear print on the State Attorney General's website. It would be an invasion of the privacy these independent corporations are entitled to if it was any other way. The senior centers are state-compliant simply by filing our annual reports to the state of Kansas, and we are five oh one C three compliant by filing our nine ninety forms annually with the IRS. Until the state or IRS has a problem with our operations, the county nor its politically-appointed board should be harassing the seniors of this county with frivolous and onerous additional regulations and rules and investigations into our affairs. If and when we begin to receive public monies directly from the Lincoln, directly from Lincoln County in the future, the state only requires that we make available a single annual financial report as required and defined under KSA forty-five two forty. The state enacted this law recognizing the burden nonprofits have when they receive public monies. Complying with this act is supposed to relieve them from all the political whims and fancies of commissions and politically-appointed boards who would otherwise try to violate their independence and privacy, which is exactly the harm seniors in Lincoln County have been dealing with for years. The senior center nonprofit organizations voluntarily can be as open as they like and as open as their members and directors want them, want them to be. However, they do not need, nor should they be forced, to deal with the added regulatory burdens and complexities of Cora, coma, or other made-up council rules that take away from the time often done by volunteers helping other senior citizens engage and participate in their community life. They should be able to have meetings on their terms according to their own bylaws and no one else's. The senior centers of Lincoln County appoint and approve our own boards. We value the privacy that affords our memberships and patrons. We value our independence and always have. You are politically-elected officials. Your council board is politically-appointed. We will no longer be pawns nor victims to the political leanings of your board now or in the future nor by any present or future commission. All of you are welcome to attend our programs and events. We would love for you to participate. But other than being active participants in our events and programs, please stop using your elected offices to spy on and coerce us through your politically-appointed board. We are tired of being the scapegoat for the Council on Aging's own transparency problems. As far as transparency goes, the last three fiscal years of the Sylvan Senior Center mill levy community bank account statements are now online at www.lincolncountymeetings.org. And anyone who wants to see where the mill levy money went with our organization can easily see that. They will also see the thousands of dollars our own members had to donate and deposit into that same account just to keep our basic utilities bills paid on time as well. We humbly suggest that until the Council on Aging or even Lincoln County is willing to put their bank statements online, you worry more about auditing the Council on Aging and not the senior centers because that's where the money has always been, and that's where a serious amount of it is still unspent, undistributed, sitting in the Council on Aging bank accounts. If this commission wants to maintain its legitimacy to tax its residents and property owners under a special elderly service tax, it should take responsibility for the mess it created and begin to allocate fair amounts of monies directly to the senior centers or, and the tax. Sylvan Senior Center serves the entire western half of the county and should be receiving a lot more than the five to ten percent of the tax it has been receiving all these years. The commission also needs to take a serious look at the amount of money the Council on Aging has been spending on its own administrative overhead and keeps hidden away in its own organizational bank accounts. Creating endless administrative rules and monitoring tasks over the senior centers is not an effective or justifiable use of so much of the elderly service tax. The commission needs to find better uses for that money with other worthy cause nonprofits which might actually provide real services to seniors, especially in county communit, communities which currently lack them. Schick Counseling is a volunteer-provided service throughout the state, and we don't need to fund an unnecessary administrative position at a cost to the taxpayers exceeding thirty-five thousand dollars a year when the senior centers have never been under any state requirement to have the council administrative over their affairs. Administerate over their affairs. And if the current Schick administrator refuses to offer volunteer services without a county-funded job to administrate over the senior centers, there are volunteers in the region who can fill that void quickly. The ball is in the commissioner's court. The Sylvan Senior Center's chief responsibility is to our members and patrons. We have a duty and justification to seek a fair portion of the elderly service tax as long as this commission sees fit to deny proper fund. as long as this commission sees fit to deny proper funding to our patrons and members who represent upwards of forty percent of the taxes being paid. If the commission sees fit to include our senior center when its next allocation of elderly service tax money is made, we will be able to focus all our energies on expanding the enriching programs and services we currently offer our members and patrons. If the commission instead chooses to continue to litigate all these issues in the court of public opinion, we believe we have a strong case and we will continue to plead our case until the commission makes the right decision and begins funding both the Lincoln and Sylvan Senior Centers with the respect and trust they deserve.
Anything else?
Do you not want to have a response to our correspondence?
What?
You don't have a response?
I got it today. I got it today. I will read it and I will think about it. Are you, I'm going to respond to it?
Well, I'd just like to highlight a few of the things that were said in there.
You just read it to me. You don't need to highlight it.
You know what, I believe I was given a half an hour on the agenda and we went over my time, so I've only been up for ten minutes now, so you can sit patiently and wait.
No, you actually have more than ten hours.
No, dawn was still up here at noon when it was beginning of my time and I was given a half an hour on the agenda.
Say something. You know, you've been talking here for two hours straight, so get on with it.
So, what I'd like to point out-
You also have fifteen minutes last week and you took thirty, so.
Well, that's why I amended my request and made thirty minutes this week just because of, because you pointed that out to me, so thank you. I appreciate that help. One thing I'd like to highlight there which has not been discussed thoroughly and I do know, I mean, it's my district that is facing this lack of funding in this particular issue and it is true that District Three, if you were to consider the majority of that district, having the only elderly service program funded would be to the senior center because it's only funding two senior centers. That district is putting in for about forty percent of the total taxes. So I do think we should have a problem collecting forty percent from an area that in turn out of the hundred percent is only receiving maybe five percent.
Your district even includes part of the city of Lincoln. There are a lot of people in the Vesper area that come in here to the senior center. There are people from up north that come in here to the senior center, so to say that your district represents forty percent, your district includes part of the city of Lincoln.
Yes, it does. And if you were to take the time to break down those numbers, I'm sure that we could still all agree that five percent is not merely a drop in the bucket of that forty percent if you were to split it. You know, if you wanted to say that maybe a portion of my district is more densely populated that's participating in the Lincoln Senior Center, even if you were to split it fifty-fifty, that would still be twenty percent of the total money that should be deemed and allocated for, toward the Sylvan Senior Center. So there's a huge discrepancy there between collecting forty percent from a district and only redistributing a small portion, even if it was half of the forty percent to, you know, the two thirds of the district that is on the western half, that would still be twenty percent of the total tax dollars collected. So, and then there were two questions I had for you, Terry. The first was you had said that Sylvan Senior Center received upwards of thirteen thousand dollars last year and I would just like to see that. Did you bring that with you? You've said it for two weeks now.
No, I don't have the, I don't have the-
I would like you to substantiate that because you keep claiming that in public meetings and you never bring the paperwork.
Those six thousand are over the floor.
Well, I'd still like to see that. I mean, if that's gonna be part of the conversation, it needs to be substantiated. And then additionally, you've mentioned many times in past meetings about my personal attorney being paid out of mill levy funds and I'd like you to substantiate that as well because I'm getting tired of being accused of that.
I never said it was paid for on, of public funds.
You did.
The senior center paid for it. They did.
And you said it was public funds.
No, I didn't. I said they paid for it, a private person's attorney. It states it right on their meeting, in minutes of their meeting. There isn't even a thank you letter from Laura Laidoll the next month.
And they're-
So to say they didn't do it is wrong.
I didn't, I didn't say they didn't do it. I said it wasn't done-
Besides, you know, you quote this, you're always quoting the IRS statutes and regulations and stuff, but if you read under a little bit farther, you're going to find that private money is auditable if it's commingled with public money. The public money and the private money has been commingled for years.
So, could you substantiate that?
What do you mean?
I mean, can you substantiate that?
Anytime that they've commingled the money, they've taken public money and put it in private accounts.
Can you show me, can you show me?
They've taken private money and put it in the public accounts.
You just said they took public money and put it in their private account and I would like you to show me that because you've said that more than once.
I'll see if I can do that.
And you keep saying it in public meetings and it's not true and I would like you to substantiate it.
According to their financials that they turned in.
I would like to see that.
Okay, I'll see if I can look it.
Okay.
Can I say one thing before you quit? In short, why not just eliminate this program from the budget in the fall and use up all the money they got, if any, and continue?
Continue what?
Continue the programs wherever they've got going for the elderly, just don't finance it, period. Let them use the money they got and maybe five, 10 years ago, they'll come in here and want something different. Maybe they never will. Just make it fair, just don't, don't give them money unfairly. Just eliminate it. Eliminate it, zero. Now, if you can't do that, you have to have a public vote put on the ballot.
What's that gonna benefit?
You might have to do that.
I think that, I think that has to happen. If it was instated with a public vote, I think it can only be rescinded with a public vote. Are you, I think-
Did we have to have a public vote to eliminate it down from the two mils to the seventy-five thousand?
Yes, no, no.
No, because it's set up to, two mils.
Okay, what percentage is the seventy-five thousand? How many mil?
One point four four, well, that was last year, I'm just guessing, but it's somewhere around one.
A little less than a mil around.
So you still cut that down some more, you're saying?
You can cut it down to zero. We could not tax for it, basically, and that's, I think that's what you're saying. We could choose, we could choose not to tax for it.
We can't on the one mil, but can we on the first two half mil?
The half, the half mil, I'm not sure. The second half mil is up to as well, but the very first question I'm not sure about.
It looks like if they're not gonna make a division more equitable, the best way is just to cut it down.
It just says not to exceed on the question that we have. Not to exceed one half mil on the question from nineteen ninety-four, which is a little different wording than up to one half or one. But, I mean, I think that this very issue goes back to the prior conversation about the commissioners gaining public trust. If you don't make decisions with impartiality, then you're not going to be considered to be trustworthy with that funding and so there have been quite a few people come to me with that same comment. Why are we paying for this in the first place? I mean, it was voted in, it was a small margin, you know, by which it passed. Well, at least the first one that I looked up, but why are we paying for an organization to have a savings account is basically the question that I've been getting over and over.
They all have savings accounts. Sylvan has sixteen thousand dollars.
Okay, again, you're talking about a savings account that has been generated with fundraising. If an organization, if the council on aging did fundraising-
Regardless.
No, it's not regardless.
Money's money. If they've got enough money to operate, why would they tax it?
That is how you've been running this county the whole time you've been a commissioner? Money is money?
No, what I'm saying is if they have money in savings, they have money in savings.
Terry, your money is not my money and my money is not your money, but public money is available for public scrutiny at all times. If an organization generates a private fund through whatever means, donation, fundraising-
Why don't they use it to fund themselves? I don't care if it's the Sylvan Senior Center or the Lincoln Senior Center.
That's exactly what was just commented. If they do all have savings, then why are we funding them?
That's what I just said and now you're arguing about it. But you're saying, oh, no, they don't have to spend their money because-
I didn't say they don't have to spend their money. I said, we're talking about where the public money has gone and what has been distributed between the two organizations, at what percentage and at what, you know, we're, remember, we're giving this money to a bureaucratic entity that's between us and the recipients who actually provide the services. My other question for you earlier, last week, you, I think it was last week or two weeks ago, you said that there were other services provided by the council on aging, elderly services, and I would like you to name those.
I don't have this one in front of me.
One of them is the delivery of meals to the shut-ins in Barnard, I can tell you that.
That is through the, that is through the Lincoln Senior Center.
That is through the council on aging. If you will look at the, they are being paid mileage to take the meals to Lincoln.
So now you're saying that the council on aging is paying itself to run the program that the Lincoln Senior Center is in charge of running?
Paying someone mileage to deliver the meals.
That, and that is not a service being provided by the council on aging.
Yes and no.
No, it's not. The meals program is directly funded through North Central Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging to the Lincoln Senior Center. Some of the money from the council on aging that goes into Lincoln Senior Center budget is to subsidize that meals program. The only reason a meals program exists is because the Lincoln Senior Center is charged with the entirety of that meals program. The meals are delivered there, generated there and delivered by them on a regular basis. If you're telling me that now the council on aging has chosen one of its members to pay to deliver meals on behalf of Lincoln Senior Center, once again, we're commingling funds. We're commingling those organizations duties because the Lincoln Senior Center is the only authorized entity to provide the meal program.
They offer the same thing to Sylvan.
So once again, now you're on record twice saying that if it's illegitimate, as long as everybody does it, it's okay.
There's nothing wrong with them providing mileage for someone to deliver meals out of town.
It's still a function of the Lincoln Senior Center.
No, it's not.
Who prepares the meals?
But they don't deliver them to Barnard.
Who prepares the meals?
They don't deliver them to Barnard.
The Lincoln Senior Center prepares the meals.
That's what Hill's Area Agency requires, I think it's a minimum fifteen or something like that.
And they're not hitting their minimum?
No.
Right, so they're still not in compliance even with the regulations of their own meal program and you just said it for all of us to hear.
Flint Hills told them that they could pay someone to do it. They couldn't pay it out of, Flint Hills couldn't pay someone to do it if it's under fifteen meals, I believe it's.
So then what you're telling me is Lincoln Senior Center has justification to request more money in their budget so that they can facilitate the delivery of their meals.
They're not paying it. The council on aging is paying the money.
But it's the program of the Lincoln Senior Center. That is not a program, so you're telling me the council on aging-
The meals are, the actual meal is.
Yes, the whole meal program is facilitated by the Lincoln Senior Center. That is their program.
I'm most positive the council on aging sent out postcards asking people whether or not they wanted to help pay and they were trying to help feed shut-ins and others. So I would consider that part of the council on aging program. The senior center didn't go out and try to reach. I kind of take it as it, this is just my opinion, that it's almost similar to the sheriff's department getting meals at the hospital. Sheriff's Department is contracting with the hospital to provide meals for prisoners. So I kind of feel like the council on aging is contracting with the Lincoln Senior Center to provide meals to shut-ins in other areas rather than just the city of Lincoln, but I could be off base about that, but I would say it's a council on aging program, just those meals, not the entire meal program, just those meals that are being delivered outside.
But, but what I'm saying is if they're taking one person and paying the mileage to deliver meals that are already generated and funded, those meals are provided by funding from the Lincoln Senior Center. The council on aging is not paying separately for those meals. The council on aging is paying someone to drive them.
They're paying the mileage.
Okay.
How hard is that to understand?
But what you're-
The mileage is separate from the meal.
And what you're pointing out is that the Lincoln Senior Center merely needs to request an additional portion of funding so that they can pay that mileage bill. That's it.
I said Flint Hills, if they had over fifteen meals, I think it was fifteen.
The senior center can do it individually with tax dollars created in the county. They don't have to do it with money generated.
Or the senior center needs to build a council on aging for the meals that they're making. That's really what should be doing.
Well, regardless, okay, so, so you're saying that by them paying mileage instead of the senior center paying mileage, that they're providing another service, so do you have another one?
This isn't going anywhere.
Could I just say, the charter that you all read doesn't say you have to fund senior centers.
No, it doesn't.
It says senior programs.
That's right.
And programs are different than activities.
Or they can be synonymous depending on what you consider.
Like the program that Donna Reiner was talking about for crisis health for seniors is being read, that's a program.
Well, we can pick up that conversation later since you guys want to-
They're funding postal service.
Funding the postal service?
Yeah.
Twenty-four dollars and seventy cents to send me one piece of paper.
You received one?
One piece of paper from the council on aging and it cost them twenty-four dollars and seventy cents.
What is it?
It is a list of the meetings for this year.
The same list that we got? Is that what they paid for us to receive it as well?
They hand delivered it.
Hand delivered?
There are others.
Twenty-four dollars and twenty-
Twenty-four dollars and seventy cents. Send me one piece of paper.
It's in regards to people who got up and left the meeting, I think.
I think you ought to go down there and take the gals.
And I believe Al Jo asked for people last time to reconsider to come back to the meeting. This may have been, I don't know because I didn't know how to do it, but it may have been a way to invite people to come back to the meeting.
Well, I'll continue with my portion. You can read over that letter and maybe you'll have a point. I think, okay, we already talked about displaying the county boards on the website. I think that will be helpful for a multitude of reasons. I had a question, are either of you aware of the project that's going on with the culvert on what would be Sixth Road, which is the highway blacktop to the interstate from Sylvan Grove?
I knew they were gonna replace the culvert.
Okay.
They reported a couple of weeks ago that they were doing the detour route and going to start working on it and they named the roads.
The detour route? Okay, but that's why I'm confused. The last time we discussed that, it wasn't gonna need a detour, it was going to be one, they purchased a culvert smaller than the one that was in there and they were just going to basically line it.
The last engineer in here, he said that wasn't going to work.
The engineer.
The culvert was squished down too far to pull another pipe through. That's what they said in here the other day.
Yeah, and that they were working on the detour route and that they would have to cut it.
They couldn't go to a smaller pipe and still have flooded water, so that was the smallest pipe they could think of.
Okay, well, there are a few things I think we need to address. I don't know if Michael is just not gonna continue to attend the weekly meetings as he had done for years since he was employed, but I think it's probably pertinent with as much money as that department spends out of our budget, I think he should probably be here on a regular basis, not just once a month with the other departments.
I don't think he has to be here every week unless there's something to discuss.
Well, he was here, he was here every week for the entire time that you've been a commissioner until this year, so I'm not sure why you're saying that now.
Well, the one thing, they used to come in and give us a report and talk to us about what they were doing and we'd discuss the different things and then they'd go back to work, but now they have to sit in here for an hour and a half while you question everything they do, so it takes up pretty much their whole morning now instead of an hour.
So accountability is not welcome at this board of commission? That's pretty, that's pretty sad to hear. I'm sorry that you feel that way.
Everything is accountable to you, Alexis. You don't understand most of it, but it's accountable to you. You can't even look at two pictures, a wishboard, and see which one was caused by a blade and which one was caused by traffic.
I offered the pictures to everyone.
And sit here and argue with someone that ran a blade for fifty years as to which is which.
I offered the pictures to everyone. It's clear to see that corrugation, just so you're aware of the proper term, is not caused in an even manner that's spread across the entire width of a blade when you have just traffic created corrugation. It's, it's more or less, the picture is right there, Terry, for everyone to see.
Yeah, I know, I tried to show you. I tried to show you in the picture which one's at an angle and which one's straight across the road.
It doesn't matter. If a blade operator isn't tilting their angle, or tilting their blade at a forty-five degree angle, it's not gonna show up at a forty-five degree angle.
They're not gonna go out there and blade with a straight blade.
Then you haven't seen as many, then you haven't seen as many people operating as I have in your- Then you haven't seen as many people operating as I have in your many, many years. But regardless, you don't get an evenly proportioned corrugation. And, you know, the question was, oh, Alexis, is it perpendicular to the road? Well, of course it's perpendicular. It's not parallel. So if you're going to question me about the tilt of an angle, whether it's 30 degrees or 45 degrees or 25 degrees, because we all know that with our new $200,000 machines, you have a full range of motion with that blade. You know, you can't tell me that at one particular angle, it means that it's definitely the blade, and any other angle is not. A perpendicular line to the road is a perpendicular line to the road, and a parallel line to the road is a parallel. So when you ask me, is it perpendicular to the road, of course it's perpendicular to the road, at which angle, have not measured. The point is, there is a lot of corrugation happening because blade practices have not been established and done with oversight. I mean, we continually have complaints about the same areas over and over, which again is why I asked Michael O'Hare to bring us a map and to show us where on the map in the county are we having consistent problems because there are certain areas where maybe one operator, like I said, hasn't pulled any ditches in several years, and maybe another one has done several. So that just needs to be addressed from an administrative standpoint. It's just a matter of instruction, and we're lacking instruction. And for some reason, we don't want to have any oversight over that, but it is imperative.
I'll be back in here Thursday, Friday. You can sit here all day while I'm passing up. Howard's not even paying attention anymore.
He's taking notes, Terry, unlike you.